Join in the pledge of allegiance.
Considering approval of the minutes dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three and April fourth, twenty twenty. There have not been any submitted corrections. Therefore, the minutes are approved. Many of the planning commissioners have any conflicts of interest or expertise communication there for any items? I hope not in this legislative.
Hey, real quick, Chair, if you don't mind, um, I had several people call me and ask me about tonight's meeting. And I just said, hey, come to the meeting, you guys, you know, there's gonna be some public comments. And so several people have called me and I basically directed them to the planning department, made any comments and to come to the meeting, they wanted to see what it was all about. So.
I've also had emails and texts, personal ones. I just sort of.
Okay, I am the applicant on the first one, so that. I'll just go there. And just to be clear, Courtland. The discussions on this is with being a legislative item, more or less encouraged, is that correct?
Yes, legislative items, you are able to communicate with other people. So, yes, that's fine.
Okay, well, um, I guess I missed roll call. Looks like everybody's in attendance though, so. That way. With that, we'll dive right into a couple of legislative items that we have on the agenda. Rick, would you please explain?
You bet. So the first item on the agenda, this is a legislative item and it has been noticed for a public hearing. Um, as such, you will need to open and close the public hearing and take public comment. On this one, Mr. Ewart is going to be representing this as staff. This is not a county-driven application. Um, the applicant, um, this is an applicant-driven application and so as such, um, you want to give the applicant due time to present as well.
Mr. Chairman, if you can give me just a couple of moments, I want to make sure I get into the presentation. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed that strong call. Are we going with the second item first?
Nope, we're staying right where we're at.
First item first, got it. Okay, this slideshow is fairly, um, simple. Uh, the request that you have is to allow agritourism in the shoreline zone. It's actually a pretty simple text amendment as requested by the applicant. But, alright. Trying to get that slideshow open for you, but the, um, the implication of it is a little bit more broad. Um, so allowing agritourism in the shoreline zone, the shoreline zones primary, uh, preferred use is agriculture. Its other uses or preferred uses are uses that protect water quality for the reservoir shoreline zone wraps around the reservoir essentially. And, and pretty, pretty closely hugs the, um, the boundaries of that reservoir. I'm gonna get that presentation to show up. If it, if the proposal was enacted as proposed, it would just take the shoreline zone and add in one line in the under conditional uses. That would say agritourism would be allowed by conditional use essentially in the shoreline zone. Uh, the general plan talks about supporting agricultural uses and agricultural endeavors. Uh, and one way that we've already identified as helping agricultural uses and agricultural operations stay in business is to help them supplement their farm income by allowing other types of, of uses to occur. In this particular case, agritourism tourism types of uses. The intention of the agritourism ordinance is to essentially allow that farmer to attract, uh, tourist style, uh, business to their farm to help essentially celebrate the farm operation, uh, bring in some revenue in doing that. Um, and help supplement the revenue that the farm would otherwise have. Um, you can imagine, uh, at fall time, we see a lot of these, uh, corn mazes or, uh, uh, you pick them pumpkin patches and whatnot. Uh, those are, those are agritourism types of, of operations, whether or not those jurisdictions have adopted an agritourism, um, ordinance as we have. Uh, I was down in Southern Utah earlier, uh, this month and there were, there's a, um, a pecan, pecan farm and, uh, it opened for tourists to go visit and take tours of the pecan farm. Um, they had little lodging that you can go and stay at the lodge and, uh, learn about, uh, how that farm operates. Uh, while you're staying, staying in your duration at, uh, down in St. George area. And so those are the kind of operations that would, uh, occur in agritourism. As we were looking over this, uh, proposal, we, we found a lot of support in the general plan and normally we would say we would recommend approval on that. And I think our, the staff report does suggest, uh, uh, recommendation for approval. Discussing this a little bit more with, um, other, uh, planning commissioners and, uh, as staff, we started going through the agritourism ordinance. It's been a little while since we've dusted that one off and, uh, found that there are some probably bigger oper ended, open-ended loopholes that we would rather see closed before we expand the allowance. Um, some of those loopholes include, uh, defining the parameters of what is supplemental income when it comes to, uh, farm operations. Uh, or agritourism operations. Another one is how far away from agricultural uses are we, uh, prepared to allow agritourism to go? Can it be a completely separate use? It just happens to be on a farm. You know, maybe it's a, a restaurant that has no association with the farm. Do we want to go that far? Or do we want to say, you know what, that restaurant needs to have some kind of association with the farm? So, um, my suggestion would be that we table this item, uh, today. If you're comfortable with it, you guys make whatever decision you want to. Um, it is formatted in a way that you could take action, positive action and, uh, forward a recommendation or negative recommendation to the county commission if you wanted to today. But staff's recommendation would be to table it to a work session. And we'll bring to you guys some amendments to the agritourism ordinance prior to expanding it into the shore. Any questions for me? Okay, this does require a, a public hearing and the applicant may want to address the commission themselves.
Yeah, I didn't want to say anything. Please do.
Evening Commissioners, Jason Johnson, Huntsville. Yep, say that right. Um, you guys are much more intimidating as you sit down. Um, I know that online it's hard sometimes. So I think Charlie hit it really well of the purpose why this is here. It's the preservation of agriculture. As we see farming is becoming a lot harder, is more sustainable to primary income, how do we supplement that? You know, the thought is every, as we looked across all of the other applicants, applications. Where agritourism is, they also have agriculture. So anywhere there's agriculture, we typically have agritourism except for in the shoreline zone. Um, this still comes back before the planning commission is conditional use. So if there's any concern of impact on the shoreline zone, as there should be, there's, there's, there's more impacts because they're closer to the water. That makes sense. We, as a planning commission, uh, you can decide whether they actually have mitigated those impacts or not. What this also allows though is community engagement. A lot of times this particular applicant uses local restaurants. When he has people at his house for dinner, uses local restaurants and supports local business. Uh, local grocery stores. And so when you, we allow for this agritourism, there, the, it allows for local economy to build. So I think, I think that's really, and then Charlie pointed out that income stream is diversified. It's not just some crops, it's not just some animals. And then we talked about that boosting of, um, our local economy. So really the idea, I'll keep it short, but it's, it's keeping things rural. If, when farms can't make money, they sell to developers and then they get subdivided. How do we keep that as we go to this node type? These villages, what do we do with the peripheries when they become no longer economically viable without density? This could be a way for it. Now, I believe that what I've read from my application, um, that's what we're asking for. I understand. I read Charlie's notes. Good to wait with, uh, as a commission to table. Good way to, if you guys feel like you need more time to work through the suggestions I read through them, uh, good, whatever you guys feel. Thanks. Open to questions.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All, and do I have a second? All in favor? All right, please, uh, please come forward. Um, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Looks like Jim online has his hand up. We'll start there. Jim? All right, anybody else have any comments for agritourism in the shoreline zone?
I have some, hello? Oh, I was muted.
There he is.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. My name is Jim Byrd. I'm from Huntsville, Utah. Um, appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. I like Charlie's, uh, recommendation of tabling it. Because I agree that this is, uh, needing further discussion. Um, as he even sta- stated on the, um, shoreline zone. One of the clear things is to ensure adequate provisions for water supply, domestic sewage in disposal. As you know, that there has been two water and sewage, um, studies have been, have been done, one in two thousand nineteen, one in, uh, twenty twenty-two with, uh, very big concerns about sewage. Now, although Charlie suggested that this allows, uh, agricultural tourism for, uh, like cornfields. If you look at what agricultural tourism also does, uh, I've, there's five. Bed and breakfast farm dwellings, two guest rooms, bed and breakfast farm retreats, seven guest rooms, bed and breakfast farm in sixteen guest rooms, luxury camping, clamping, excel accessory dwelling units and, and really kind of, uh, RV parks. Um, so I think that in our area and valley, we need to start paying attention to infrastructure. How would anything, uh, that includes more bed and breakfast or more short-term mills going to impact our water and sewage? My real concern is that the county's approving development prior to infrastructure. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Okay. All right. This is the public hearing. Okay, so. You, you, you're welcome.
I just wanted to make clear, um, the way that I understand it, if we do end up tabling this item and it comes back later, this is actually the public hearing to speak on this topic. I just want to make sure that everyone that might want to speak is clear on that.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll now close the comment period or the public hearing. Does enough have any further comments? No. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to, um, just make some observations. In our pre-meeting yesterday, we discussed, we looked at the definition of agritourism. Which says agritourism has to be associated with the primary use of the property, which is agriculture. It can exist separately. We looked in further in the agritourism ordinance and it said you can have one non-agricultural use for every agricultural use, which seems to be an inconsistency. And I, I look here, just on the first page, it says, uh, let's notice another one. Kind of a conflict, it's, uh, objectives of the shoreline zone. Number one is promote the use of land for agriculture. Number three is preserve natural vegetation. It seems to me there's a little conflict there. Farmers don't preserve natural vegetation, they plant crops. So it seems appropriate. Uh, oh, and I think staff told us that there was a question last time. Why was agritourism not originally included in the S one zone? And I think the staff found out it was an oversight or it was, they weren't focused on that. They were looking at something else. There was no reason that wasn't included. It just wasn't included. So we have that additional information. So it seems to me that it's appropriate because of these inconsistencies, they're not necessarily, uh, Mr. Ewart called it. Not sure, but I thi- I think the ordinance has got some inconsistencies in it, which makes it hard to interpret. And I think it would be appropriate to table this to give staff a chance and, and maybe even legal to look at it. And say, how do we resolve these inconsistencies? How do we make it so it's more clear, more understandable, therefore more enforceable? And now, we can make the language of the ordinance fit with the purpose of the ordinance. I think now is the right time to do that. So those are some comments.
Do their comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that, um, file number ZTA twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Uh, applicant-driven request to amend Weber County Code to allow agritourism in the S one zone. But, um, we table uh, a decision on this application to give staff time to make a more detailed analysis of the conflicts that appear in the ordinance that is now written. And to identify any other, uh, inconsistencies that they may find so that we can come out of this with a, um, a better ordinance, more enforceable and recognizes what we're trying to accomplish in the general plan and in this specific S one zone.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to table, um, all, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion to table carries unanimous. Oh, any, any opposed thing? I think I have that I can, right? So unanimous to table for further staff review. Uh, and make any needed adjustments to the agritourism code. With that, Rick, let's, we need to explain the second, uh, item on our agenda here.
You bet. This is an applicant-initiated request to amend the form-based village zoning ordinance to adjust the new town Eden street regulating plan. And to provide alternative design standards for Newtown Eden. This will require a public hearing. It has been noticed for that and you'll want it forward or whatever recommendation you decide will be forwarded on to the county commission for their deliberation. And Mr. Ewart is going to be presenting.
Awesome. Charlie, you're up. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's get this pulled up pretty good. Right. So, um, the request that we have before us, this is an applicant-driven request, as, um, Rick mentioned, um, is to amend the form-based zone to, uh, potentially provide for a proposed, uh, development called Eden Crossing. Um, part of this, uh, amendment, uh, well, this amendment kind of comes in three different steps. One is to amend the text of the design standards for types of architecture and buildings that could happen in the Eden area. Um, and staff are recommending that we kind of broaden that a little bit to look at design standards for other areas as well. Um, and then the second is to look at the images that have been submitted, uh, by the applicant as examples of that design standard that they are proposing. And then the third is to look at the, um, Eden area, um, and, uh, determine whether or not addition of the types of streets that the applicant is proposing and in the location where the applicant is proposing is appropriate. Um, as you, as we look over those maps, um, I've got a few, uh, other items to go over in this, uh, presentation, but as we look at the, over those maps. Each one of the maps, except for the, um, status quo, which is the existing map as adopted, um, shows the applicant's proposed streets in the location that the applicant is suggesting that they might go. And so I didn't mess around with the applicant's suggestion on where those streets may go. It is important to note that, uh, the applicant isn't requesting all the changes that are on the map. They're only requesting changes to add the streets that they're asking for. And it is staff that is asking for changes to other streets and that's because we've got, um, once we get, if we do get new streets going on the map, we need connections of those streets to other streets that exist in the area. So it'd be appropriate to do that planning at this time.
Charlie, could you explain? What this would mean? Mean that it's approved or what's the next step? What's the?
Perfect, yes. So in today's meeting, if you guys were to recommend approval and your recommendation was taken by the county commissioner and essentially adopted as is. It does not apply the form-based zone to any property. It adjusts the form-based zone so that if someone were to ask to be rezoned to the form-based zone, they could use those adjustments. So right now, it's not applied to this property or any of the properties in the Eden area. Um, Old Town Eden, there's a couple of them going in process right now. Uh, commission hasn't made a final decision on those ones yet, but you guys looked at, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, but this changes no zoning, uh, if this does get passed on. Okay, it should be noted, there is an application in for our review for rezone to this zone. However, it's just not running concurrent with these changes. Okay. Um, I didn't know how many people would be in the room and so, uh, as was requested in our last, uh, meeting, I included the historical context of a form-based. I'm gonna fly through all this stuff. If you guys need to stop and give any, uh, uh, quick, uh, commentary on it, uh, I will. But, uh, I figure maybe we want to fly through these as we look at form-based adjustments in time, uh, each time. Just to make sure that the public is aware and up to speed on, on the historical context. So, um, we've got, uh, uh, over the past, uh, eight years, uh, we've been working on, um, something of this nature, starting with twenty sixteen. Uh, we've got a new general plan, actually twenty fifteen, we started working on that general plan and then in twenty sixteen, we adopted a new general plan. Uh, and that general plan talks about villages, villages being the primary receiving area for transferable development rights and transferable development rights moving off of open spaces and moving into villages. So twenty sixteen, we have the general plan. Um, twenty eighteen and nineteen, we created a little, uh, committee for Old Town Eden to start creating that, uh, form-based code. We didn't know at the time it would be a form-based code. We thought it would be more of a small area regulating. But as we got further into that with the, uh, that steering committee and with the county commissioners and with planning commissioners at the time, it seemed that not creating a new small area plan, going straight to a governing document on how to create these villages would be most appropriate. So we went straight to ordinance as opposed to creating a, a supplement to the general plan. Um, twenty nineteen, um, the, uh, county commission said, hey, we like where you're going. Include Newtown Eden in with your Old Town Eden street regulating plans. And so, um, as of twenty twenty-one, the form-based code for both Newtown and Old Town, uh, Old Town E D, um, uh, was adopted. In twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, Nordic came in, Nordic, uh, Valley Ski Resort owners came in and wanted to create a Nordic Village. So we had just made adjustments to the form-based code to give them a street regulating. And then, um, twenty twenty-two, Western Weaver, uh, did the same and we just barely in our last two meetings ago, I think, last meeting, two years ago, um, you guys moved, uh, to forward a positive recommendation and make the changes to the form-based code to implement Western Weaver's changes as well as additional items that you may hope to, uh, address in, as it applies to your own. Um, just a quick overview. We're talking about rural streets in village nodes that can potentially eventually become more than that. And this is to suck in density into these village nodes off of the, um, those desirable open spaces that the general wants to have. And so just addition of street infrastructure, bringing, uh, buildings up. One set up. And so just addition of street infrastructure, bringing buildings up to the street. Providing for, uh, open spaces, parks, trails, uh, all of those are very important as well as dark sky lighting. Bicycle improvements, parking, uh, and trees. If you're going to have a village that is successful at absorbing transferable development rights. Um, you need to have a village that is vibrant, it is economically feasible, um, it pays for itself. Um, and in those cases, you will find developers willing to go and invest in property and then purchase development rights to move them in. So you've got a zero net gain on development for the valley. Overall considerations for this, um, is incompatible with the general plan and the community vision goals and principles and is it the right time? Um, and are there other goals or community goals that we should be considering, um, in this proposal? General plan talks about residential development being centered around villages in town centers and designed to provide open spaces and efficient uses of. This is the commercial locations and village areas map that is in the general plan that identifies, um, Old Town Eden. Right up in here and Newtown Eden area right there. Um, just to zoom in of each of those potential village areas and here's your old town and Newtown Eden area. Uh, with the old town park right in center of all. These, uh, red, uh, circles, um, sometimes, uh, folks will look at the red circles and say, well, that's the limit of the village and that's not the case. The general plan just talks about that red circle being a quarter mile radius. It's a half mile down there. Quarter mile is generally speaking, the maximum distance an individual is willing to walk without getting into a car. And that's why we put these on here. So we can talk about where those walkable villages are. You could see over here in, um, uh, Newtown Eden area that lighter pink, that is commercial, the purple is manufacturing. So pink is commercial valley, purple is manufacturing valley. Um, and, uh, when we put that quarter mile circle around there, yeah, it was, it was nice that most of that commercial operation, uh, was right inside of the circle. Another general planning consideration in the Ogden Valley, Weaver County will promote and encourage unique and functional design and new developments, public spaces and streets gates. To create a visible character distinct to the Ogden Valley. So the general plan talks about, um, three specific architectural styles, but it very clearly says these are examples, not necessarily the limit of what your architectural styling should be. So. Architectural styles examples, there's mountain rustic, agrarian and old west mining style. Uh, mountain rustic, uh, we're talking about, uh, natural stone, wood and heavy timbers, uh, for, uh, siding and, uh, metal roofs and flat or. Uh, potentially pitched roofs in there. This is mountain rustic in the plane. Um, which ironically isn't an architectural style that we currently have in our, um, form based code. It is one that is being suggested by staff, um, at the request of the planning commission. Um, so here's mountain rustic agrarian. We do have agrarian in the plan, um, agrarian is identified as painted or natural wood, uh, metal X bar or Z bar trim. Um, Claire story or cupolas, uh, and, uh, roofs would have barn pitches shed roofs and metal. In our previous discussions, uh, work session discussions, the planning commission aired some concerns that the agricultural. Um, buildings don't tend to make really good street front buildings. And so in the proposal of what you'll see, if we do, if you're, if you're comfortable going with the proposal. I put together a matrix that says the different styles of architecture that are allowed in each village area. And if you're going to use agriculture, for example, in the Old Town Eden area, it would be for buildings that are not right on the street front. And then maybe the buildings on the street front could be a different style like, like the, uh, mountain rustic. And then Old West Mindtown, um, this was, uh, effectively put in there for the, uh, Old Town Eden area intending to, uh, capture. The styling of a very specific era of the Mindtown in the old west. Uh, siding would be brick, wood, painted or natural, um, and then stone. Uh, roofs be flat, uh, and or pitched with parapet walls. Um, and these types of buildings have, um, strong, um, form, uh, base body and cap, the base being the, uh, the bottom level. The body being just above that and the cap being some kind of a, uh, architectural feature, um, at the top of the building as you can see in each of these buildings here. By the way, these images that I showed you on the last three slides, these are directly from your general plan. So these aren't ones that I just went out and searched. These are ones that got adopted. But again, the plan calls them examples, so we can go outside of what those examples are. The other thing that the general plan, uh, discusses is, um, how the Ogden Valley community desires a variety of housing types to meet the needs of a diverse population of various income levels, ages and stages of life. This one was, um. I think one person, as we were going to the general plan process, put it, uh, they said, uh, we got to figure out how to embrace what we hate. Uh, and they affectionately said that because they were aging. And at some point in time, they will have to retire if they weren't already retired and, uh, knowing that they are going to need to move from their multi-story building into something that's a little bit more. Um, a facilitative, facilitative of their kind of lifestyle. Uh, they also mentioned that, uh, their children need some of it. And so having something for the newlyweds and the nearly deads is going to be really important, uh, for the future. Design styles for, um, streets, uh, if you're looking at an economic, uh, economically viable and vibrant community. You have to have street activity. And so in order to give street activity, you've got to have wide lengths of way to allow that street activity. We're talking about commercial operations at on the sidewalk, um, sales and rentals of, um, uh, recreation equipment for clothing or art. Um, having street dining, um, the more activity you have at the street, the more exciting the place feels, the more exciting the place feels, the more economically viable it becomes. The more economically viable it becomes, the more likely you'll have investment in that village. And then more investment you get in that village, or at least the desire for investment, the more T D Rs will be purchased and moved into it. So. You could see a little bit of synergy and creating that snowball that could, uh, potentially. Execute the general plan. Now, I don't see the general plan being fully successful. If we were fully successful, we would see no buildings in any of the open space and only buildings in these village areas. That's what the general plan suggests that our future should be. Uh, for the valley. Um, I think what we're going to see is less buildings in the open space and a little bit more in these village areas. Um, and that would be a good, uh, metric of success when we're able to do that. Okay, that's the general plan. Policy review. Oh, by the way. The street section is your cross section that is adopted in your form basis. So we went straight with this street cross section that we could see here. Um, things like benches, um, and, uh, the little ballers that you see to keep, uh, vehicles from going up and sidewalks. We don't get into that level of specificity in the form based zone. But that's because we want to make sure there's some room for engineering discretion when it comes to building these sections. This is a, a planner's artistic styling engineers will need to get in. Policy review. Okay. Proposed new architectural style. The applicant is asking for a new architectural style. Uh, they're calling mountain modern. This is the same. Term mountain modern that has been used on powder mountain. Uh, powder mountain is, uh, mountain modern architectural styling. Types of things that you'll see, uh, in mountain modern siding, you'll see wood, stone base, metal trim. Roofs, you'll see, uh, you'll see some flat roofs, you'll see some pitched and gabled roofs, you'll see some shed roofs. Um, features that you'll see, um, double and triple vertical windows, um, and that's specific to. This type, uh, this applicant's styling type, they're suggesting that, uh, your vertical rectangular windows should come in either duplicates or triplets. Uh, so that you've got a consistency in window openings and these building designs. Um, prominent porch deck chimney exposed rafter tails and decorative kickers. What could that look like? But we've already got a building that's up there that has this building style. So you can see the stone at the base level. You see the, uh, heavy timbers, you see the, the, uh, rafter tails. Or maybe it's, uh, something a little bit different. Now, this. Would only be, uh, workable under our new height allowances if it's set back more than thirty feet from the street right away. Cause it's got three stories, but where you've got two stories here, you may be able to fit that up next to the street. Uh, you've got your, um, uh, your decorative kickers that that pull out and hold up the shed roof. Um, you've got your angled, uh, your pitch roofs, you got your exposed columns, um, prominent decks and, uh, covered porch. For example, same thing when you're looking at these buildings, you get a stone base, you have wood sightings, you got building or you got windows in triple kit. Um, where you see them. Um, and then you've got a prominent porch, prominent porch on the deck, exposure rafters, et cetera. Okay, that's the applicant's proposed, um, architectural styling. One architectural style that we're not mentioning here, but is already in the code is what Nordic has adopted, which is the modern Alpine style. Um, each of these styles, well, the. Mountain rustic, mountain modern, which is the applicant's proposing and the mountain, sorry, modern Alpine. They have a lot of overlap. And so they could probably look really good in the same village and in many, uh, cases, even adding in the agrarian, uh, in, in even in some of these villages would probably just. And so one of the things that you'll see in, um, the. Proposal from staff, again, this isn't coming from the applicant, this is coming from staff is maybe we take all of these different, these five design architectural styles. Put it into a matrix and say, in Old Town Eden, you're on the street or you're circling the, um, the, the, uh, park there. That's got to be your old mind town. Other parts of that highway, sorry, when I say on the street, if you're on the highway or you're going around the old town, uh, park. Then maybe that's old mountain. Other parts of the streets, uh, that are commercial or multifamily and in the future part of Old Town, maybe that can be agrarian, or maybe that can be. Um, in the Eden area, um, if you were set back from the street, maybe agrarian is just fine. If you're right on the street and a modern, not rustic. I mean, all those maybe you just want to do. So the table helps us provide a little bit of flexibility in there to assign different architectural stylings to different communities. Okay, now the street really regulating map. So the street regulating map amendment primarily affects the regulating map of Newtown. But I also, um, put in there a change to Old Town Eden that I'll explain based off of the most recent request to rezone and. Transfer T D Rs from Sunnyfield Farms and I'll show you what I mean by that. Five alternatives, we've got current map is alternative one, and you got alternative A, B, C and D after that. So always. The first alternative is always changed. And so it's a, uh, reasonable alternative as long as it's something that's functioning and working for you.
Charlie, what was the original based on?
The original map. Um, so the original map was based on where existing zones are. Um, and the path of least resistance. Um, we, we looked at where existing zones and existing uses are in the, um, Old Town area. And said, you know what, um, we're probably going to get a lot less people angry if we paint it this color instead of that color. So if you look up at the area, the applicant is proposing, uh, development up in this area here. Right now it's agri agriculture, right? Um, there's some rural residential in there too. So we didn't want to paint it heavy intensity, anything because the owners of that area at the time. It was just, uh, rural, uh, residential and or agriculture there. We didn't want to make any of this sound. Now we have an applicant that owns property in here who's thinking, you know what, maybe we could increase the density of this property. Had this applicant been here asking for this at the time, we probably would have had a little bit of a different conversation than this map is made. But that being said, we also looked at the four-way intersection. There's a huge desire from the valley to have a roundabout right there. That roundabout, roundabouts do not work well inside of a more urbanized area is they're not pedestrian. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't get pedestrians or through them, but roundabouts work well for cars. They're good on either end of a pedestrian area.
Okay, Charlie. Sorry, they would just keep giving those comments on the sound isn't working for me. Sorry.
Sorry, do I need to get in here a little closer?
I don't. I don't know. It just keeps popping up. Yes, you do.
Let's try again. Uh, I apologize if my peas pop in this mic, cause that's what it feels like. Um. So when you're looking at a roundabout, they work well when you're anchoring either side of a, of a commercial village area that's supposed to be pedestrian oriented. You bring your vehicle to that area, you leave your vehicle, you go shopping or you go enjoy your community and then you go back to your vehicle. So the roundabouts work well on the edges. They don't work well in the center. Um, they can work fine in the center of a vehicle oriented area where you've got people who aren't intending to spend a lot of time outside of their cars. But they don't work well in areas where you're trying to attract street pedestrian activity, um, on the sidewalks and the sidewalk levels. So. When you're looking at your current, um, configuration, the roundabout seemed to work pretty well because everything to the east of the intersection is just vehicle oriented and or governmental. Um, in institutional uses. So you might find drive-through restaurants or shopping, um, uh, grocery stores or something that is very likely to. Uh, require vehicle movement in that area. Um, but you don't see that over here in the, um, areas that were proposed for mixed use commercial, which is less vehicle centric. And then over here, um, Sunnyfield, uh, the owner of Sunnyfield, or at least, um, the owner's, um. Uh, employee or employees, um, contacted us when we were originally laying out Old Town saying, we don't want a street going through our farm. We want our farm to be a farm. We want that farm to be successful. And so that street is, uh, a threat to the farm. Um, our response back to the, um, owner's employee was. Right now you've got the right to do quite a bit of development on your farm if you do T D Rs. And so we want to plan for that kind of development, just in case you as a landowner choose to do that. And they said, well, we're not going to choose to do that. And I said, okay, well, show that. And the applicant in your last meeting showed you that they want to move density off of the Sunnyfield Farm and move it into a more appropriate subdivision location. Um, and so on the next four or yeah, next four maps, you will see that this street here has been removed. Um, in favor of, um, celebrating the open nature and the desire of the owner of that farm to keep the property open. Um, something else to keep your eye on. In the next few slides, you'll see a little bit more developing happening up in here. If, for example, um, commercial is brought into this area here. Um, it's going to be a matter of time before other landowners see the benefit. There's going to be sewer, there's going to be water utilities, facilities that are extended to this area. And if we're not planning in advance of those landowners coming in and doing development, um, we're, we're going to be behind the curve ball, uh, when they do commit. So you'll see a few streets up in there, but they're not high density or high intensity streets. Okay. So.
Question Charlie, what? Does this current map take into account that storage facility that was built to those streets?
No. When we created this map, that storage facility wasn't even, um, proposed at that time. In fact, that's, actually, let's talk about that for just a second. So that storage facility is right here. The. Try again. Here's Maverick right here on the corner, clearly vehicle oriented, right? You've got, um, two banks right next to each other here. Um, both of them are vehicle oriented drive-throughs. Um, you've got a storage facility, definitely vehicle oriented. You've got a car wash facility over in here. You've got a vehicle repair facility right in here. And so as we look at this area, we've already got a lot of vehicle automobile oriented types of uses. Coming down in here, we've got the county road sheds and then we've got another storage facility that's already entitled. They haven't started building yet, but they've got a development agreement right over in here. So a lot of vehicle oriented types of uses here. If we wanted this plan to prevail in creating, um, mixed use, more pedestrian oriented, um, streets. We would need to wait those uses out. Um, and in order to wait those uses out, they're not going to go away until there's an economic reason for them. So, um, that is something to think about and something that, um, I took into consideration as I was creating the next, um, maps that follow here. So you can see my notes off to the side, um, this. Road here. When we created this map here, we were working on a two dimensional piece of paper. Uh, now that we've got, uh, a little bit more, uh, uh, hill shade and topographic information. We realized that the government institutional road that we built down here, which was supposed to be up on the bluff, came right down through the river bottoms. And that's probably not an appropriate location for that to go. And so just a little bit more to think about as you look at the next maps. Okay. Next map. So. The, let me just kind of toggle back and forth so you can. Okay, current. And then your next map here. So the applicant's requested street is this one here comes up. To the canal. This one right here. A little bit of this guy here. Cross street right here. And then a little bit coming over here. That's the applicant's proposed project right there. Um, this does follow what the applicant has asked for. Advocate may be willing to adjust these land use designations if, uh, if we discuss it with them, but. Um, they wanted to ask this question specifically to the planning commission first. As we look at a cross street here, we realize, okay, well, that should probably go somewhere and maybe go somewhere in the other direction. But when we come up against existing subdivisions, there's not a whole lot of places we can make connections in here without going three yards. We don't want to go three yards. That just doesn't make sense. And so there are a few opportunities for connection into the subdivision here, but where there are opportunities. We want to take advantage of them too, so that we can connect these, uh, neighborhoods to their, uh, adjacent neighborhoods. Um, a lot of times when people get the, um. When they get really invested in their, uh. What I call a, a perception of a right of ex. what I call a a perception of a right of exclusivity. You get this a lot when you're uh when you get people living on a dead end road. Um, and as somebody goes to drive by on their cul-de-sac road, they're out there watering the lawn and they're just making eye contact. Who is that guy on my street? But on other streets where you've just got the traveling public going down, you just don't, don't uh, don't have that kind of um uh mentality. And I know because I lived on the cul-de-sac, I grew up on the cul-de-sac. Um, it's nice, but the perception of exclusivity uh tends to be there. And so I think there may be some um desire to not make connections. I've I've heard that in other meetings as well. We don't need these connections to exist. I think once you see the development happen next door and you've lost or you missed the opportunity to make those connections, you're going to find people thinking, gosh, we probably should have looked at that differently. Um, there's no better way to prove what should have been done than to uh uh do it the wrong way the first time. So um, and you can find plenty of other communities in the area that look back and say, gosh, I wish we would have looked at this a little bit differently. Okay. So we've got these uh streets in here, maybe making a connection back and forth is going to be important here. We already know this street exists. We already know that Valley Junction Drive is going to make a connection. Uh, we know that uh a lot of folks want to see a roundabout here. Um, there's some pros and cons here. We take the government street off of the river bottoms. We do allow the landowners who are in the river bottoms to think about maybe using the farm base to create one acre and three acre lots down in those areas. But um, these lighter colors, um, very low density. When we're talking about getting down into areas that aren't otherwise already developed. Um. Here at the center of town, we see vehicle oriented uses. And then on either side, you've got mixed-use commercial. One of the comments that was brought to my attention is if we're enabling uh and facilitating commercial opportunities on this side of town, what happens to the existing commercial opportunities on that side of town? Now, my answer to that is if you've got housing units that are needed to support this kind of density over here, or sorry, this kind of commercial over here, then nothing, because riding tides, uh rising tides lift all boats. But if you don't, and you've got more people wanting to come to the new and forsake the old, then you could see some existing business owners having a challenging time. And so separating the commercial uses is something that just doesn't seem really um uh conducive to a strong economy uh for the future of this area. Um, and dividing them by vehicle centric uses, uh I think would be um not the best idea, but this is a proposal based on applicant's request and what currently exists in the current map with some adjustments. Each of these adjustments, you'll see that the density and intensity of uh development over here moves and shifts to the east. Uh, and what I heard from you guys when we were first looking at this is, gosh, this just looks like creep. At what point, if we're allowing more intensive uses here, what point do we stop that? Is it somebody here going to get the same, somebody here going to get the same, somebody here going to get the same, and then we just have a full city, wall-to-wall city. Um. Maybe what my thought here was maybe if we can offset the intensity of the new uses here by eliminating streets, roads, and intensive uses where they don't currently exist and they're not um proposed to exist by any of the current landlords, maybe that'll help offset the change. So let's go to the next map. You can see the uses kind of simmered down a little bit, and there's a reason why the color scale is the way it is. Red should seem pretty intense. You know, magenta should seem pretty intense because those are the um the types of areas where the highest uses uh can go, the highest densities and highest commercial uses. So you see, as we move um across these maps, you've still got to shift even further to the east. Still have a roundabout in the middle, and you still have vehicle oriented commercial at that center there. A little bit more government and institutional. My thought on government institutional is at some point in time, you're going to want to see the city center. And where do you want that city center? The current map has a lot of locations in the river bottom for a city center can go. Um, you're also going to want to see in a model phone uh ski bus. Uh, it is going to need to drop people off or pick people up in some places, and this might be a good location. Um, alternative C, you could see just still move shifting things a little bit more and spreading them out a little bit more. So you get different variations of uh urbanization versus sprawl. We know that we can't create a village that's rural. We know that a village is intended to go in a rural community because around it is rural, but inside that village, you're going to have some urbanization. But what level of urbanization is really up for you guys to determine. Uh, the more you spread it out, um, the more sprawlish it gets. Uh, the more you put it together, the more intense it looks right at that pinpoint. And so you guys kind of figure, figure out what that balance is. And I'm going to give you my preferred alternative, and this is just my preferred alternative. Doesn't mean it needs to be anybody else's. And let me tell you why this is my preferred alternative. What this does is it takes the existing vehicle oriented uses that are around Valley Junction Drive, and it paints that road as a vehicle oriented street. Along Highway one sixty-two and one sixty-six, where the county maintains control of those roads, we can make those your main street. It would probably need to be a three-lane main street, but we just adopted a three-lane cross-section, so we can do that. Um, but focusing on where the existing commercial operations are and celebrating their existence by allowing them to be connected with pedestrian connectivity from both sides, the applicant's proposal, as well as all along that main street area, uh will help provide a cohesive design. But here's the asterisks that a lot of people aren't going to like. That intersection will not work if you put a roundabout there. And so you could see here, we're talking about a roundabout on the south side of town anchoring one side of those commercial opportunities. And on the northwest side of town, over by the uh junior school anchoring the other side of those opportunities. Um, and then putting a four-way intersection uh or keeping a four-way intersection there with pedestrian um considerations uh for safety. The existing intersection would need to be essentially your bulb outs would need to come in. You needed to have better crosswalks, sidewalks on the sides, but they'll come down the road when other developments proposed. Um, I just wanted to make one more note that the applicant again is not asking for all these changes. It is just something that we're trying to plug into because the applicant is asking for what they're asking for. Just gonna
Putting forward. Hey, if this is what you Yes, based on what you, based on that what the applicant's proposed, here's some options that we as at planning have said this might work. This might flow better if that does go in. Um, you aren't, you aren't making the opinion to make the change. You're just saying, hey, if this goes through.
That's correct.
These are some ways we could draw this map and make it work.
That's correct. Good, good point. Let me go back to staff uh preferred alternative D here. Um, this isn't saying that what the applicant is requesting is the best idea. This is saying that if the applicant's request is approved um or recommended by you guys and finally approved by the county commission, we need to fill in the gaps between what they're proposing and what exists. And so this would be staff's recommended uh alternative. Um, it, when you have a blank slate, it's a little hard to know what is the best way to go about it. And so um now we know today we have a request. Um, what do we do about it? So the question um I think comes down to a couple of key um underlying principles. Um. We know what we so this is existing map. We know it was designed, previously designed. Um. Whether it was by a guy in his office and a sheet of paper, um thinking he knew what was best at the time or with intent. Um. Wasn't just me drawing lines. I did have information and data available to me to draw these lines, but it wasn't the best information. We've got better information, for example, river bottoms. Let's maybe focus on not putting intense uses on river bottoms. Um. Do we want to stay with that? Because we like it, because it, because it means something, it's meaningful to us. And we think it provides a better alternative, a better outcome for the Eden area. And if that's the case, are we willing to wait until the um property owners in this area are comfortable developing and buying development in order to transfer in developed properties? Um, if the answer to that question is yeah, then what we have currently is fine. Um, anchoring one side of that uh village with the roundabout and that being the main part of that pedestrian area being where um Valley Junction Drive is, that's just fine. Um. If we want to uh have open opportunities uh for um the plan to come to fruition without focusing so much on the details of um the street regulating plan that we previously adopted. For example, um, looking for uh in this case, a landowner who um wants to do TDRs and wants to do a village and is willing to invest the dollars in. Do we take those opportunities um at this time and implement them? Uh, hoping that those opportunities create in a uh scale at which maybe surrounding landowners may um jump on board with that idea. Um, and if we do so, I do still like the planning commission's idea that maybe we need to kind of temper uh, you know, the western side of that village, which isn't built out. So those are the two different um ideas that I'm seeing here, and one is a little bit more um unknown because you don't know which landowner owner is going to come and ask what thing. And when this landowner comes in and asks for something like this, does it necessitate that maybe these landowners here um are going to be stuck in following suit? Or are they going to have other options? So a few things just to pay attention to as you're thinking through your uh evaluation. Um, I do show you just to toggle back and forth so you can see. Oh, by the way, this is um the MPD overlays on the image guys had recommended approval on a few months ago. Um. We do think that'll be on the county commission agenda within the next couple of weeks. So I just went ahead and added it to the map so you guys can see kind of what that looks like up in the green area. It's the what? Uh, that's Kobe, Kobe branch.
All right. Do any of these alternatives lend themselves better or worse to water and sewer infrastructure that will eventually have to come through there?
Um. Yes and no. It depends. The applicant is actually installing sewer um at the location where they're at the property where they're looking to develop right now. Now, um, I think I mentioned to chair and vice chair in our meeting yesterday that sewer might be cutting through the the corner right here, and that's not the case. The applicant is following the road up. Um, daylighting their pressurized sewer here, it'll then drain down um and uh and then be pressurized up to Wolf Creek from there. And so we might see sewer opportunities right here at the four-way intersection that others can then tie into. But these landowners over in here, because they are so uh they've got small enough parcel sizes and there are this uh spread out, spread out enough amount of owners, diverse enough amount of owners, the economy and scale of all of them working together just isn't there. If you had everyone in there pulling their money and the resources together to throw sewer out to that property, those other properties, you might make a lot. But getting everyone at the table to build that consensus is a lot harder than if you have a single landowner that has a larger piece of property who was willing to bring that sewer to the property because they see the financial value of that. So yeah, sewer will come when you've got those landowners who have the scale that they need to to build those. So uh with that in mind, but the applicants looking to do, I think, will bring that sewer and that uh infrastructure online a lot faster than um if we were hoping that these other landowners see a benefit later.
I know the applicant is working on that number. My question is, would would one or more of these alternatives be better suited to future infrastructure?
I think that through that through a few different angles. I don't think so. Um. Depends on what somebody, well, it all comes down to what any individual landowner is willing to do, right? If we clean the slate and the government, government makes all the decisions, what's the best thing to do? Well, frankly, the best thing to do is put a large pump station or facility right down here by the reservoir and drain everything to it. That's the best thing. But up in here, I think the things that are most conducive is going to be based off of willingness of any individual landlord. So I I can't say anyone has better, a better setup uh than others. Uh. Other than the ones who are motivated to put that infrastructure. Um. I know Wolf Creek's looking at other opportunities as well to extend branches, but again, this is all just in in the works. It's not, there's nothing set in stone uh on any of this. So uh once you get the opportunity for sewer to come to a common drainage area like a uh pump station here, um, whatever is closest to that, I think is three just going to sit there without burst. As opposed to whether or not one is one's more conducive to us still layout than others. Okay, uh, that concludes my presentation. You guys have a few opportunities today. You can um recommend approval uh of the uh proposal as it's been proposed to you. But if you do that, you'll need to choose one of those alternatives that we can put that in a map. Um, you could recommend approval of um, well, frankly, any part of the um design standards or all the design standards and keep the map as it is. Um, so recommending approval, you're going to make a couple of choices in there, but um uh otherwise you could recommend approval with a lot of different changes. It's just world's your oyster on that one. Um, you could recommend denial. Uh, again, this recommendation goes on to the county commission. The county commission will make a final decision and will take your recommendation under advisement. Or you could table for further information, for the clarification, um which would be appropriate if you do table, um just like you did in the last motion, you would want to know exactly what it is that you're expecting of us with the applicant. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I worry you well enough. I put enough pictures in there. Hopefully it was a little fun.
Couple of questions, Charlie. First of all, on design standards. You've got mountain, modern, alpine, something, mountain, something else. Can you tell me the difference between those?
Hmm. I can. Um, so let's uh, let's go with mountain rustic. If you read through the standards that are written, mountain rustic talks about distressed um timbers. It talks about wood or log exterior cladding with stone base uh siding. Uh, it talks about um metal roofs that ha- are uh fatigued or aged to develop a patina or already have a patina on them, for example, core ten um corrugated metal or something like that. Um, that's rustic. Mountain modern is very similar, but you're looking at more modern and clean elements. So you're not looking at the fatigued or rustic types of uh elements. Mountain modern tends to be a little bit more specific because the applicant has suggested more specific um design uh criteria. And then modern Alpine is um, I know the Nordic folks didn't want us to say a modern interpretation of Swiss Alpine. They wanted us to say more modern interpretation of European Alpine. And so we can, I can get online and find you a a number of different examples.
This one getting. It seems like and I may, my impression may be wrong. But my impression is in Old Town Eden, the blacksmith shop got fixed up.
Sure.
And government didn't tell him how to fix it up. It, the owner just said, I think this would be cool. I think I'll fix this up. And then government came along and said, oh, I like this. I'm going to make everybody do this. Okay. Now we go to these five things we're looking at now. And the point I'm trying to, the question is just because an applicant proposes a design, should government say, okay, if you get to do that design, we're going to make everybody do that design?
That's the benefit of having my job. I don't have to make that decision. That really is for you.
That, that's right. And that's what I'm getting at. That just because an applicant proposes something, doesn't mean we have to require that of everybody else. Because then we get into these things we just discussed, the mountain modern Alpine stuff. It, it's all subjective. You can't say this is that one or the other. But then we're going to regulate somebody that comes along and wants to use this property. And you, somebody is going to say, well, that's not mountain modern or mountain rustic. That's mountain hillside. Well, you can't do do that. So wouldn't it be better if the ordinance says something to the effect that architectural uh designs will be reasonably compatible with surrounding areas?
Uh, that is something we can put in there, more than happy to add.
It seems to me that would uh.
Wouldn't that be the same thing?
No, reasonably compatible.
Because for example, like something next to the blacksmith shop, that's not, that's mountain modern would not be reasonably compatible with something that's old west.
Well, if you look at that blacksmith shop neighborhood, there's all kinds of stuff there. And it's not nineteen.
Carlos and Harland's?
No, that's, that's more like the uh blacksmith shop. But there's a script mall there. There's housing around there. But there's a script mall there. There's housing around there and it's not eighteen eighty to nineteen ten. But things can fit into that and not stand out like uh a sore thumb. They can be reasonably compatible. And maybe that's the suggestion ought to be made rather than saying some applicant came along and he wanted X. So we're going to make everybody do X rather than Y or Z, even though they probably like, okay. So that's, that's one thing.
I, I think it's a great point. It's a great point that you're exactly right. The concern, I, I think I, I, I would, I guess, challenge that is that. We talk about this being subjective and reasonably close is not subjective, is very subjective.
Pretty subjective.
I mean, so it becomes very difficult where you can say, is something old, is something mountain rustic? Does it have timbers that look aged? That's pretty, that's not as subjective as reasonably close. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I don't know how, how we get there.
But we end up, if we don't put some regulation in, we end up with storage units.
No, we don't have to end up with storage units. But we don't have to end up with something that looks cookie cutter all the same. Because that leads to blight. It leads to, we gotta tear this thing down. This is ugly. It all looks the same. I don't want to be there. That's history.
Charlie, in your experience, having. Architectural guidance such as this, where you have this range from mountain rustic. Just pretty like, does that make it easier? To cause development to not have outliers that. Challenge with or that you really have to argue about. Does this fit in or not? So having, I guess my question is having architectural standards. Does that help having a more aesthetic?
How about now? Okay, good. So when the market stimulates good design, um, then obviously we don't need design standards. Uh, it really comes down to the market. Um, I worked over in Morgan County for a little while. And there was a new building that came into, onto Main Street and Morgan hadn't adopted decent design standards at the time. They were able through a little bit of discretionary and a little bit of negotiated tools to convince a particular new uh landowner, new um, building um. Someone who was building a new building to dress up their building a little bit. But at the end of the day, the market for that business owner said, uh, a uh, metal uh frame building. But the metal corrugated siding is going to be the most cost effective way for them to do business. They put some um, uh, river cobble as a base on the front of it. Uh, but that was the, the end of it. It was shallow um pitched gable. Uh, really challenging, I think, for that main street because now it's stuck with that building for quite a bit. Whereas had they had a little bit better standards, uh, in the. You put better standards into the design on the front end, it's a lot cheaper than trying to retrofit unattractive buildings to the building. But that doesn't mean it has to be that way. Really kind of comes down to what your guys' comfort level is. Um, I brought this up because I thought I'd be able to see the new Maverick, but uh, this is the old Maverick, which uh, oh wait, no, that is the new Maverick. Let's look at that again. So the new Maverick, uh, what design is this? Um, is the question that I think. Barber was in a, you know, to me, well, it's got the um, the thicker timbers. It's got the gable roof. Um, what, does this fit in mountain modern? It's got the stone base. It's got a base bottoming cap. Probably, it probably fits and uh, it probably would be entitled to approval. I'm not going through each one of those eight requirements uh right here in my head, but um. If there's any error of subjectivity in our interpretation of whether or not this complies, we are obligated by law to err in favor of this landmark. So we probably say, yeah, you got some good timbers in there. You got a pitch roof. We're probably good to go. When we look at um. Mountain rustic, right across the street. Um, what are we looking at here? We've got a, a, uh, I don't know if that's a real chimney or not, but uh, we've got a prominent chimney. We've got a semi-covered porch. Um, we've got a gable roof and we've got heavy timber. Something we've got some mountain rustic right here. Um, now there are some diversification of building facades and horizontal plane on, on this building, I think is the other one. That may not comply with the minimum standards of diversifying, but you could see here what we have.
If you go further south from the Merritt Maverick, the old bank building, things like that, they're not the same. They're different.
That's right.
But they're, they seem to be compatible.
Yeah, and that's actually, that's uh, that's exactly the point. That's perfect example. When you're looking at these buildings, they're quite a bit different. Um, but we would say, uh, as you look at these, uh, that's probably pretty close to rustic. Maybe uh, maybe not the brick. Mountain rustic. Maybe if they were going for the mountain rustic design style, we'd say, uh, maybe some stone would be better there. Maybe some uh, uh, wood cladding would be better there. But other than that, that building's great. Um, maybe if they're going for mountain modern and they wanted to, instead of having the more uh rustic or natural wood timbers. They had more uh I-beam or uh. Better uh cut um timbers. Uh, we would say that works. So this building would be just fine. Um, let's go down one more. Um, this is a little harder to determine. Maybe agrarian? We actually tried with these guys when they first came in to uh, maybe do something a little more similar to what we saw in the other buildings out there. But so maybe this one needs some improvements to its um, building material. But as far as the form goes, it would meet their design requirements.
It's funny, I'm having trouble with your matrix because you're saying. Exact things which are undefinable.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, your matrix says it's either it's gone next in there. It's got to be Alpine. Rustic or modern out, European Alpine or something.
Did you get the chance to read the rest of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Cause the rest of the ordinance has the specifics of each of these. So modern out, modern Alpine is not the only description of what modern Alpine is. There's a list inside the ordinance.
Part of getting at in Old Town Eden, could I rebuild the heart of sight?
This side over there, um, that's the uh. Uh, new church uh over there. I'm, I'm not sure.
Probably couldn't. Cause it's not eighteen eighty to nineteen ten, old mining ten.
I, I couldn't tell you for sure.
It seems to really fit in the neighborhood. So I'm just suggesting. Don't tie everybody down to specifics. Let's have some latitude. I don't know why you have to have these design standards anyway.
But I'm happy to do whatever you guys want.
Okay, well, that's, that's a concern I have. The other thing is, is uh, the general plan says we're supposed to be rural, right? So I want to talk about carts and horses. Okay, so uh, where's the cart? Where's the horse? Okay, first of all, rural, uh. There's a lot, where the idea we have to have walkable neighborhoods.
In the general plan.
It says rural, but everything has to be walkable?
No, so the general plan doesn't say we have to be rural. Um, I think there's a misconception there. I've, I've heard you say that a few different times. The general plan talks about walkable villages.
Yeah.
In rural, uh, surrounded by rural locations. So I think we've talked about this a few different times. So you've got these village nodes, these village nodes should be walkable.
Okay.
That's what the general plan says.
I'm thinking of the idea and you expressed this some time ago. I'm still trying to wrap my mind around it. To make the village successful, we have to have commercial. To make commercial work, we have to slow down the traffic in Old Town Eden. So people will be going slow and they can look in the windows of the commercial. To slow down the traffic, we have to have center planters. We have to have angled parking. And I've asked, how do we get a swather through there? It's the only way we, we can get from South Valley to North Valley. We'll build a bypass road for this water. And then we heard testimony in our public hearing a couple of meetings ago. Well, if you're going to build this bypass road, you're going to take out our family farm that we've owned for generations. So where's the cart? Where's the horse? You know, we want to preserve the old uh, the Sunnyfield farm. But we're going to put a bypass road through somebody else's farm. Just so that we can slow down the traffic to make the commercial successful in Old Town Eden. So. What's applicant driven and what's? The desire of staff to plan little Disneyland's, you know?
Hey, to tell you, this really is your, it's your choice.
The market says if an applicant figures he can do something, okay, we ought to help the applicant. As long as it fits within zoning and we're not creating problems.
Yeah.
But if an applicant wants to do something, we want to make everybody else do the same thing. And we've got to plan the whole area. So I'm a little concerned we're focusing on a whole area instead of what the applicant wants to do.
Yeah, and that's a fair, fair shake of the stick. If you were just to ask the applicant what they want to do, and we just do that.
Okay.
Feel free. Yeah, I want to make a couple of corrections. Nobody's building a bypass through somebody's farm. When that landowner, that farm owner chooses to develop. That's where it will.
That's where you're going to say you can't develop. You got to do this bypass road because we had to take the regular road and turn it into planter boxes.
I don't know why you would say that. Anyway.
That's what we heard last week.
So um, as then. As we've listened to the presentation, there's three things that we really need to answer. Just do we like the current design standards and should we look at adding some? Should we look? And then the second question is, should we create a chart that kind of gives a choice to? Uh, an applicant that kind of says that, as shown on the screen here, you can say. Well, I'm in, I'm in Newtown. I can build one of, you know, these four designs, kind of give some flexibility that way. And then, and then the third question is, should we look at changing the map? And if we should change the map, what should we change that to? And applicant has requested a change. Is that something we should change? And if we make that change, should we, which, which variations should are best? So those are kind of the three questions and uh, we have public comment. And so if there's any other comments.
It's trimming the applicant maybe.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Question. Um, so if we were to move forward with, let's just go with these design standards, um, with that part of the question. What happens to the two form-based proposals that recently came through that are part of, I believe, Old Town Eden?
So in Old Town Eden, if, so if this were to get adopted as it is and they don't apply until after this gets adopted with a matrix. They'd be able to choose if they are along one of these streets, they'd be able to choose what.
So they, they get to automatically move into this, even though they would be approved. With the old, because the old original is just whatever Nordic has right now, right? I mean, it has, I'm sorry, Old West and agrarian.
Yes, yep. Now, uh, it wouldn't affect both of them. This is only applicable to uh, uh. Multi-family and commercial building. So single family and two-family dwellings that they uh are allowed along that street wouldn't be uh, this, these wouldn't be applied. They, whatever design somebody wants to build their single family home.
Okay, um, and then my other quick question would be that. These are questions that are asking us whether, how we feel about amending the form-based zone ordinance. So far, to my knowledge, um, the applicant for, there's a back page here, Eden Crossing Village has not come forward. So that Eden Crossing Village is not what we're discussing. We are discussing potentially amending the form-based village ordinance.
That's right. And amending that form-based village ordinance could put lines on a map that say that it's a little easier for them to ask for. Yep. Yeah, that reason will be coming down the pipeline pretty soon, probably next meeting. Depending on what you guys do here. Chair, any questions?
This whole thing, so we can put TDRs in, in these abilities. Does it concern anybody else that we don't have the TDR or the place, the banking?
Charlie. Yeah, thank you. Actually, uh, I was supposed to touch on that and I totally forgot to. Great question. So um, the county commissioners, they took uh, the planning commission recommendation on form-based from your last meeting. Um, and they, we told them that uh, you tabled the TDR component of it. We mentioned the different dialogues that were happening. You guys wanted to take a little bit more time to vet it out a little bit. And they said, let the planning commission know that they don't need to spend time on that. We already know where we want to go. And so they adopted some changes to that TDR component um, uh, already with the. The ordinance, they adopted what, two, two, uh, last two, excuse me.
So it would be nice to have that information in front of us.
Uh, more than happy to. Do you want me to pull it up?
I think it would be good to have some time to review it too.
Yeah.
I mean, we can go over it, but I think it'd be nice to have some time to review it so we understand it better.
I think that is absolutely fair. I'll pull it up and then you guys can decide whether or not you want to take some time and maybe uh, not make a decision today on this until you've reviewed it.
Sorry, did you say that we tabled it and then they went ahead and approved it?
Uh, you guys tabled that specific part of the dialogue. Uh, basically you approved other parts of the um, proposal. But said on this specific subject, don't make any, don't recommend any changes to the county commission because we want to consider it a little bit further. Um, and the county commissioners, we, we talked to them about that component of it. We talked to them about the different sides of the discussion that was happening. And they said, that's okay. Tell them, tell them they don't need to consider it anymore. We already know where we want to go on that specific.
Okay, um, as a matter of form, if I'm, if I remember correctly, when we table things, it doesn't, it's not possible to go to the county commissioners. So one thing that I would say is that in the future, rather than having one proposal that is about design standard and street maps and everything else under the sun. If we then table a portion of it, I guess the whole thing is moving forward. If we break these out into different proposals and we want to table a part of it, we, we could table that and it doesn't move. It sounds like we tabled, we wanted to table a section, but because it was under a legislative item or whatever it was under, it went ahead and went forward.
That specific item wasn't, so the county commission, the best way to explain that. That part of the deliberation, TDRs is already part of the ordinance, right? And so when we told the planning commission or the county commissioner that you guys were uh debating how exactly you want to make your recommendation on the TDRs for as far as Auger Valley goes. Um, and they heard both sides. They basically said the current policy is the way we want it. Um, they didn't want to uh, go further in debate on that. And I think they have the prerogative to do that. Now, if you guys were to say, all right, we're going to go ahead and discuss this anyway. Regardless of what the county commission wants and we want Charlie, you to take this on to the county commission for them to uh deliberate. Well, state code would say that they need to deliberate over that. Um, however, I'm pretty sure I know what the answer is because they already told us.
And when the county commission gives us direction, that's what we go off of. You can give us recommendations of things that you would like us to consider. We'll take that to the county commissioner and if they say no, it doesn't go anywhere. So that's where we have to take our direction from, is from the county commissioner because they're the legislative approval board.
Okay, I want to make sure that I understand clearly. So this particular proposal that we're talking about right now, this legislative item, it has multiple parts we've discussed. If. If in the end, what, we want to move one forward and not another one. How does that, so did we, did we effectively table the one we didn't want to move forward and it gets paused? Or does that also all, the whole item move to the county commission?
The, so talking about that last one with TDRs, it got paused. You guys pushed pause. What the county commission said, unpause, uh, we're going to make changes that we want to. And they did. Cause they have the authority to do that.
I watched the, the work session where they. I don't know if you'd call it discussed or not, where it was uh, yeah, discussed. And um, the work that we did, the discussion we had, wasn't really considered. So our discussion centered around. Uh, the general plan and bringing in some of the provisions into the D TDR process that were explicit within the general plan. And they didn't want to hear any of that. So. And, and I heard them give specific direction to tell this. specific direction to tell this commission, forget it.
So if you're asking on this item, if you break it up into three parts, is any part of it that you hold back given go to the commission? Probably, maybe. Because once you've given any kind of a recommendation, the county commission has full discretion to make whatever changes that we want to do. Whether it be to that specific item or to additional items as well.
Maybe I'm misremembering, but I thought it was if we approve or deny, they can go with whatever they want. They can take our advice. They can not take our advice, but by tabling, it doesn't move forward. That's what I was under the impression of.
So that particular section and your deliberation on that section doesn't include, and it did.
Okay.
All right. And I can address that as well. Looking at the statute, it is not, um, it doesn't specifically say that if you table it, they cannot move forward on that, though. The provision that does say when they may not make an amendment is a legislative body may not make any amendment, um, under this section. Unless the legislative body first submits the amendment to the planning commission for the planning commission's recommendation. The way that is worded is uh, it makes it sound like they have to give the planning commission the opportunity first to consider and make a recommendation about what to do. But it does not say specifically that if you fail to make a recommendation about a particular part, they cannot move forward. Um, they have to give the planning commission an opportunity to make a recommendation. Uh, it might be implied there that they can't act until you actually make a recommendation, but it doesn't say that specifically. That's probably debatable.
It also says if you give them a recommendation, they have to consider. But where there was a non-recommendation because it was tabled, it kind of went down differently.
And these are things that would have been discussed under the director's comments at the end of this meeting. So we could update you on those things, but you're updated now. So that's good.
Take the heat off. Any other questions for me before you guys hear from the applicant?
Let's dig into the TDRs.
Oh, uh, okay. Let's, uh, have, have a discussion about this here. So, um, what you guys saw, if you read through the Western Weaver TDR component, um, then you'll see what applies to, to you guys except for the bonus. So this is still a one-for-one transfer in the Ogden Valley. Uh, basically, anyone who owns property in a form-based zone can transfer development rights to their property. Anyone who owns, whether in a form-based zone or almost anywhere else on the valley floor can send property. So a form-based owner can receive, anyone else can send. Um, it doesn't matter whether or not the person who receives wants to build. Uh, so there's where the banking comes in. Um, so if I were to come to you and say, you've got 10 development rights, I'm in the form-based zone, you're in the three zone, I own by all 10 of your development rights. We exchange money, we go down the county, we record a notice onto your property that says those rights don't exist anymore. Record a notice of my property that says those rights now belong to me. In the zone, if I can't build those 10 units because I can't meet the minimum uh, standards, because let's say I have a, let's say I have a 2,000 square foot lot and I can't put anything on the 2,000 square foot lot. Well, I've got 10 development rights assigned to my property, but I can then do what I need to do with, maybe sell it to somebody else. Um, but I might not be able to build that. Or maybe I can build one of them and then I've got nine that I can sell.
So was it determined if density rights can be transferred from one village zone to another? Or a community to another, like an established village?
Yeah. So it has to be in the same planning area. So Ogden Valley's has to stay in Ogden Valley, Western Weaver has to stay in Western. So we do know that much. But you can transfer from a TDR or sorry, you can transfer from a form base to any other form base, which would include going into any other village. Yeah. So that part of the previous code, that component didn't change. That's, that's still there.
Okay, thanks.
Conversation I heard. According was such that they didn't want to do anything respective banking that would get in the way of. It was perceived that if banking restricted, that would slow down. Would change the development playing field way that it would be there be less of. Thank you. Conversation.
Any other need for clarification on TDR?
All right. Would the applicant like to say a few words?
Hello, Eric Householder. Um, Eric Langbart, who made this application, is stuck in traffic. So he's going to zoom in. And then I thought we could open the public and we can give us questions as we can. So if you could.
There you go. Thank you. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I appreciate that. I was probably in the worst traffic I've ever seen trying to get to Ogden. So, um, I, I think just want to touch on a few things and, and Charlie did a really good job, I think, on, on our application of, you know, clarifying what we're looking for. And, and it really does come down to, to two items. And one is the architecture. Uh, the second is that street regulating plan that is, is focused in that northeast corner of, of the current four-way. Uh, as far as the architecture goes, you know, we really feel like having, you know, at least for us, one additional option is, is a good thing. And I know there's been a lot of dialogue about having multiple options. And I, and I think um, speaking personally, and, and we can talk through with, with Eric and, and John and Shane, um, the developers is, you know, having that matrix, I don't think is necessarily a bad idea. Um, you know, we're, we're kind of of the opinion that more options are, are good uh, to have. And, and that if they're, you know, quality options that are, are provided throughout the valley that, you know, a piece here and a piece there that that sort of makes the entire valley tie together, but yet still is a very high standard, I think is, is the ultimate goal. So, um, you know, the, what we're proposing on the architecture is really lending to some of the newer stuff that's being built there today with the mountain modern. Um, and our proposal, that's, that's going to be more focused on, you know, the mixed-use commercial and, and the multifamily. We feel that that mountain modern architecture lends itself to that, uh, in use, uh, much more than than say the, uh, the agrarian or the old town or, or even the, the Nordic, um, mountain alpine. So, you know, the, that's, that's kind of where we stand with the architecture. We, we know there's a lot of discussion that, that, uh, is still out there, but we think it's, it's a, it's a good thing to have that, that diversity. Um, and then quickly on the street plan, you know, what we're proposing in that northeast corner is, and I think Charlie mentioned it early, early on in his, his discussion was that you know, from a planning standpoint, it, it may be the most appropriate land uh, for a village overlay uh, for those, those types of uses. And, and there's several reasons why it's, you know, it's, it's not in the sensitive areas at all. It, it's extremely flat. And as Charlie mentioned, you know, we're, we're proposing or, or his map is, is also adding in a proposal that would take away maybe some of the more intense use, uh, in the southwest quadrant along the river corridor, which we think makes a lot of sense. Um, but yet again, you know, if that's the give and take that, you know, the commission wants to, to discuss, you know, we're looking at ours. Um, and Charlie's looking at, at that, at that portion. Uh, but we feel that ours is, is ideal, you know, for various reasons. Another is that there, there are larger undeveloped parcels. And, you know, Charlie's option D, um, I think does hit on, on some of the issues that we saw, uh, globally was that a lot of those, uh, uses in that southwest quadrant are, you know, a little further away from the intersection. Quite honestly, they are maybe less conducive for, um, compatible, you know, multifamily uses, for instance, uh, you know, that, that we're, we're closer to the four-way with our development. So the idea that, that there would be creep is is really not something that we've, that we believe in. And just to give you some, some numbers. Uh, in that southwest quadrant, the distillery is 1,700 feet away from the interchange. The car wash is about 1,600. Uh, I believe there's some new storage units over there that are six to 900 feet. And then there's all sorts of parcels and, and, you know, infill things that, that are, that are over there that are going to make it more challenging to be, um, you know, at least early on, an effective, effective, um, village zone. Where our corner on that northeast corner that we're proposing, the change to the street plan, our mixed-use commercial proposed roads are seven to 800 feet from the intersection. And, uh, core of our multifamily proposal is 1,000 feet. So substantially closer than than, you know, the, the core that was being proposed previously. So all in all, we think that, that those give and takes are appropriate. Um, then the last thing that I know was also touched on was that, that we are bringing sewer and water through that property. And so, you know, I've heard time and again that, you know, one of the biggest things with this general plan is, is we've got to get rid of the, the septic. And we've got to get on sewer and the opportunity to do that is there. Uh, you know, today, uh, or, you know, just around the corner, literally. You know, and I think that the one thing I want, I want to point out, I keep going back to your general plan is, is you know, on, on the introduction of page one, there's, there's a few sentences here that talk about the future decision-making should be supported by evidence that it is the right time, right place, and right set of circumstances for the implementation. And I think that this parcel and then these proposed changes are exactly that. The sewer and the water going in, the, the parcels are owned and, and they're, they're, they're perfect for development based on not just what planners think, but also on what the land thinks. And I think Charlie's changes in that southwest quadrant is, is a great give and take for, for what we're proposing on that northeast corner. And then the last, the last thing, um, that I wanted to mention was just that, you know, we're also with, with this, we're, we're also coming in with a variety of housing options. And it's just one more, uh, principle. Uh, you know, within the, the general plan that, that, uh, that we're trying to hit, that, you know, everybody talks about affordability and, and having a place where their kids can, can buy and live. And you know, that, that's not going to be in one acre and three acre lots. And so this project, you know, with this street regulating plan change would provide that opportunity. Uh, you know, now, and, and the time and place for that, for that possibility is now with this, with this proposal. Um, I think that's, I think that's everything I wanted to touch on. I know you've got some public comment. I'll be available here and, and maybe Eric Householder can help me, uh, uh, cue me up if there's any issues and we'll try and make this, this work. And I appreciate you letting me hop on via Zoom. So thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um. We have any questions or, or entertain a motion to open the public comment? I'll make a motion to open public comment. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Um, any materials that are displayed or referenced, written materials are going to be part of the record and must be left with the commission. Person speaking for committee or board will be given five minutes. All of their individuals be entitled to three minutes prior to speaking. Anyone needs more time, please, for ask more time. Please come forward, make comments. We'd love to hear them.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, uh, Hugh Shum, 2497 North Highway 166, Eden, Utah. I've lived in that, uh, my home for approximately 29 years. Um, first off, I'm going to start off with a question. Uh, why did each of you move to the valley? Aside from Mr. Montgomery, who grew up in the valley, you're all probably transplants. Mr. Burton's probably lived here longer than anybody else. But, um, why did you move here? I moved here because I raised horses. I trained dogs professionally. And I set up a farm and I still farm today. I want you to think about this. You're going to make a decision today to determine various subjects that we've covered today and that we've covered the last three or four months, whether it be mountain modern, mountain rustic, October rustic, July, uh, rustic, rustic, whatever. My point is this. We have a development that's going across the street from my house. It's adjacent Keith Hills, uh, A-frame. We know that the roads need to be changed and the applicant wants those roads changed. I'm here to say this, that across the street that was uh, bought by Mr. Lewis, who sits behind me. He bought that from Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown sold 13 acres. That, my friends, about nine years ago was a flood plain. It still is. It has water that's about a net, uh, foot and a half deep that passes from there on to Mr. Brunker's land that goes to the four subdivision. We've had a record flooding. Folks, you don't believe me? Ask the people behind me how much flooding they've had. Number two, do we want that in our community? And the answer is no. I'm here to say this, keep the roads the same. This is called putting the cart before the horse. Period. I don't care what it is. There's been no approval over here for that subdivision, has there? Nope. But we're talking about modern rustic, Mr. Rustic, whatever rustic. Mr. Uh, Burton asked in our last meeting, can we get a swather down that road? We still can't get a, a swather down that road, Mr. Burton. Eric Householder, in our last meeting, Mr. Hill and I sat quietly. Mr. Barber quietly asked him, how many units do you plan on having in that uh, proposed subdivision, multifamily apartments, condos? Eric Householder said to him, and I was shocked. This is not the appropriate time to discuss. Oh, really? Mr. Barber then asked him, how many transfer development rights and where are those coming from? This isn't the right time is what he said to discuss that. Oh, really? If I'd have been in those shoes, I'd have told you. It'd have been 100, it'd been 200 or 300. Now's the time to act. Say no, keep the roads the same. And everything's going to work out. But I'm going to speak my mind. Who needs that development? There's two people in the room and they're behind me. You're going to hear a lot of people tonight. So you're going to stay late. You're going to hear them all. But I'm here to say this, I oppose it. It is not good business and it doesn't make sense. I'm not opposed to somebody wants to build a home and they buy land and they have 10 acres. They want to put in 10 homes. Listen, he bought the land. It was subject to, um, three acre minimum. You lie in the bed and sleep in it. Period. That would happen to me. So I'm here to say, keep the roads the same. Just keep them the same. Thank you.
I'm Keith Hill. I live at 5350 East 2200 North in Eden. Um, I've been a lifelong resident of Eden. And this is my orphinometer. Even be here today. Um, I just, you know, Hugh asked, you know, why, why, why does everybody live in the valley? And the reason why is because it's a, it's a rural area that we all. That's why we live there. And they're wanting to put condos or whatever they're putting there. You know, keep the condos up at Wolf Creek. Fine. Keep, you know, let them build up there. But not on the valley floor, not, not down over farming and, and it's going to increase traffic down there. Keep, keep it on the Wolf Creek side where it belongs. If it belongs up there, but, uh, just another thing that bothered me, um, pretty much everything that Charlie even said tonight made me sick to my stomach just to listen to. Um, you know, and, and there's seven of you guys up here. And what I picked up sitting out in the audience is does your, does anything you guys even say matter? Uh, you know, they, they talked about, uh, well, well, for instance, last month, they were talking about the design and everything that they wanted. And Charlie said, it doesn't matter. The commissioners have already decided what they want. Pretty much said the same thing tonight. You know, and I mean, do you guys even matter being here? Does your, does your comments matter? We just here for formality to see what the commissioners want anyway, or what the developers want. Um, I'd just like to see things stay the same. I know I'm living in the past. But, uh, yeah. Also, I was, I was thinking, I know you're supposed to stay on subject, but, you know, in Ogden, they were talking about, uh, the, uh, you know, doing a, a car wash up there in the middle of Ogden, then enough residents got together and shut that car wash down. That was already zoned for commercial use. I think it was by the burger place in South Ogden. I can't remember the name. It was in the paper last week. And, uh, I would just think there's a lot of citizens here that don't, we, we don't want this. And the citizens in Ogden got it. You know, somehow they got it so that they can't build this car wash at the Jake's Over the Top Burger. And, uh, I would think, you know, to, to change the whole zoning so that they can do it. Apartments down on the valley floor is just wrong. You know, like I said, keep it up, keep it up where they already have them, not down on the valley floor. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Excuse me, Kirk Langford, Eden. This is not property that had, should have been rezoned for higher density. Everything Charlie said was, as he stated, sometimes it's Charlie's opinion. It doesn't mean it's exact fact. He did say though, that the traffic at this area will be so bad that we will probably have to lose the roundabout. Jeff's right. You're not going to be driving any swathers through here. But you already rezoned the property in the hopes that the engineer would create the drainage and all the things it needed to be. That was an old ranch that was a detention pond for a lot of water that comes down from Wolf Creek that is not engineered correctly and brings water down to other people's property and floods them out. And now the county is going to have to step in and spend all of our monies to fix that problem. Putting new roads in this area is not right. You don't have a right just to do anything that you want when it has an adverse effect on other people's private property rights. No one's elitist. I grew up in the valley. I've lived there most of my life. I grew up there from, and working on farms since I was four or five years old. It's not the valley I grew up in. But this is egregious. We've got new roads we want to have in, new design standards that would never get in Snowmass or Aspen or Stoburn Lawn or Ketchum or these other areas we compete with. But I just, we, we're dependent on you folks to stick up for the rest of us. But I just want to end here by saying that you should deny this type of road system into this area. Because the next thing you're going to get is the request to come in and do all kinds of high density. Because people take the simple word of entitlement that you have a right. You have the right to the current zoning. The other part of entitlement here, if I can blow it up, which is the one I think the applicant has, the belief that one is inherently deserving of privileges or special treatment. No wonder your kids have a sense of entitlement. That's right out of the dictionary. The infrastructure that irrigates hundreds of acres to the east was ripped out and torn up this winter without permission. And that infrastructure is still going to be there if you change these form based roads that Charlie showed you that you're going to have. There was alterations without permission under the canal that provides the infrastructure to the farmers. You've heard me stand up here before and say, why is it that the thing that you guys all love is open space? Is the thing that gets dismissed so quickly? Charlie mentioned during the general plan that those circles were not exact. That's true. But no one during that process that I was involved with, and I have been since the early nineties, imagined we would have a village that's this big, that's going to have this much traffic. Everybody thought it would be a little village like Huntsville. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy Brunker from five, two, six, eight, east, twenty-five hundred north. I'm just directly east of the property that's beginning to develop and the property right next to it. The access for the, they, he's talking about the, to, uh, build a, uh, an access alternate road. I won't be able to access that road to go from my property to the, any, any part of that road. And I'm the one that drives the swathers and the big equipment and the wide loads. And the things that go through that, that I, that he will stop me from doing what I'm doing by the development. So leave the roads the way they are. Do not move them. And another thing is if you have any inclination of, if there's like whatever many parts of this proposal and you guys think that, oh, there's only two or three that you don't like. You just heard that when you send it to the commissioners, they're going to approve it anyway. So don't send nothing. Stop it right now. Thanks.
My name is David Carver, two, four, three, nine, North Highway one sixty-six. I live right across the street from Troy. My suggestion is to table this for about ten years, then I'll be gone and not have to deal with it. I thought my head was going to blow up. I really did. I thought I need to go get an ice cream cone. This is way too much for what we're doing. I say leave the roads the way they are. We're in way over our head in what we're trying to do. You won't have one single resident say, yes, let's go that direction. Even though we have all these issues with sewer and water, they won't say, let's do it. Not one. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Brunker. I live at twenty-four hundred North Highway one sixty-six. I am the house this way from Troy and across the street from these other guys. Um, I just wanted to say no. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say no. I don't agree. I want the roads to stay the same and I agree with all of my neighbors behind me. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Kelly Roundy. Um, I represent myself and my wife Sarah, who is here. We live at fifty-three, sixty-one, east, twenty-six, twenty-five, north, Eden. We need to keep the roads the same. Sarah and I are a younger generation here in the valley. We've been here and own property for about ten years. I think you're qualified to be a resident or a level after fifty or sixty, but we are not that. But we need to keep the roads the same. And thank you.
My name is Kelly Booth. I live at fifty-two, fifty-five, east, Highway one sixty-six. And I live directly south of the development that's proposed. It's interesting because I read through the master plan in the last week, the general master plan for Ogden Valley. And mentioned in that plan are the two words peace and quiet. And Charlie, in your presentation multiple times, you mentioned city center. Well, wait a second. I thought we were talking about villages. And yet you said city center twice. So a city center sounds, looks, and is a lot more brighter than a village. And again, multiple times in the master plan, it mentions the rural agricultural nature of the valley. And yet there was nothing agricultural about that proposed building that put up there. There was nothing agricultural about the style. There's nothing agricultural about putting a commercial use property in a residential area. There's nothing agricultural about putting high density housing in a rural area. Twenty minutes away, we have tons of high density housing. It's a quick drive from Ogden Canyon. From my house, I can make it to the city of Ogden in twenty minutes. Depends on who I'm following. Also, uh, it was interesting because I think we have to decide what the master plan is. And yet in the master plan, it mentioned the residents are against the development. I've lived in Ogden Valley for forty-five years. And yet in the last ten years, I've never seen the valley more developed, more torn apart. And it, it seems the loophole, which I learned here tonight is TDRs. So I challenged the commission to, to relook at that. And why is that loophole allowed to change our rural agricultural valley? It's named Eden for a reason. We don't need another Sun Valley. There's already one. We don't need another Jackson Hole. There's already one. We don't need another Park City. You can sit in the traffic in Park City for a half an hour to get between those two villages that are no longer even close to villages. But there's only one Eden. And we need to keep it Eden. And another thing I want to bring up is the pathway that connects the elementary school to the junior high. I work in education. My career is in education. That pathway was created to get the schoolchildren safely from the elementary to the junior high. And we want to throw a three lane road in the middle of that. We want our children riding their bikes on a three lane road. We think that's safe. We think that sound, does it sound like Eden when a sewer system is being pulled through the center of town? Does that sound like Eden? Another thing I wanted to bring up is Charlie mentioned the mistake of putting road base on a river bottom. Guess what, Charlie? The river bottom's always been there. That the river bottom didn't appear after the road is. So for forty-five years, I've lived in Eden within two acres. I used to ice skate in the field that this development is proposed. That's how much water can sit on this land. And it wasn't even, I mean, I did grow up in the eighties. Those were high water years. But we ice skated there and we ice skated there a lot and it was magical. So I'm against the adding of new roads. I'm against changing the structure of the roads. I'm all for more swathers going down our roads in Eden. I support it. We should have a parade of swathers going down Eden. But, but let's preserve this for future generations. Let's allow Eden to really stay what it was meant and set up to be. My great, great grandfather was part of the naming of Eden. And they said, surely there could be a place no more beautiful than this. Surely this must be what Eden is. Thank you.
I've got to follow that because that's my wife. She makes it easy for me. I'll make it simple. Um, I'm Chad Booth. Um, fifty-two, fifty-five, east, Highway one sixty-six in Eden. I've lived in the valley for forty-three years. I grew up in Huntsville and moved over to Eden, um, after marrying Kelly. Um, and really my main point is, um, I think if you think about, and, and Kelly, I don't think, well, I'm forty-three years, so I've got a few more years till I'm a true valley add, I guess fifty years, if that's the mark. Hopefully I make it there. But I don't think it really, the years matters. It's what the valley means to you. And I think you can live there for two years and figure out the magic of the valley. And, um, it's magic and the last six, seven, eight, nine, ten years, we've all seen the influx of people who've discovered it at the dam, at the ski resorts. And that's wonderful. You want to do that, but you've got to have a plan for it. And I think that when we, um, develop in a way that doesn't have a plan and it's after the, the greed of a few developers who figured it out. And to a degree, I've got to take my hat off to them, but we still have to have a plan to make it smart and do it smart in the valley. And I don't think that's happening. I definitely don't think this, what we heard tonight is the slipperiest, strangest proposal I think I've ever heard to kind of, um, make it seem like it's this wonderful, good thing. Um, my, my main point is keep the valley as it is, keep the streets, are they as they are over in, in Eden? And make a better, uh, plan going forward with, uh, the overall valley. Thanks.
Dave Carver, fifty-five, sixty east, near the end of Old Eden, uh, Dead Man's Corner. That's the best way to call it. But, um, I do have one question before I get started my comments for Charlie. On those new road proposals, what's the width? By chance? Okay. Didn't know if it was like a hundred feet, um, talking, looking at that, because a lot of those proposed roads put three in my yard. Which is very tight considering my yard's not that big. But that's why I'm concerned about how much road we're talking about. Are we talking a hundred feet? My lot's only two hundred feet deep, so I just lost half my lot. Um, so I want to bring that up, but I was curious about that. The next thing is growing up in the valley. It's not the same, what you've heard. It's not the same as we've experienced growing up. This is a place where we want to see the swathers, which has been said. My wife, she had a community of ladies come up, spend a few nights in Huntsville, go to the new art center in Huntsville. And one of their main comments was, this is calm. It's peaceful. We love it because it's not all these other big resort towns that we don't want to be. And especially for those that have grown up here. We love the calm. We love the quiet. We don't want to change more roads because it's going to impact everything that we've loved to grow about this valley. Um, I'm the one person I think that has not built a house up here. In the fact that I built on a house or a lot that had an old barn on it. And so in that barn that was a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five years old, for me, we tried to retain that character when we built it, tried to pay homage to the heritage of those prior to it. Um, and I think Eden should have that plan to say, our architecture, our style should pay homage to those that came before. So, thank you. Oh, don't change the roads. It's got to be that. Thank you.
Uh, Shane Phelps, uh, twenty-three hundred North in Eden. I've been in the valley for quite a long time with grandma and grandpa down the road. You know, I've really, uh, enjoy being there needing. I, I'm sitting here and I'm just going to say, I feel bad. You guys spend so much time doing your job. I'm truly grateful for that. I just found something out that you guys tabled something and then something kind of went through. And I'm kind of having a little bit of a problem with that. I would actually be very curious on what that, that point of information that was. Um, they are elected officials, officials, and I think that as, you know, a voting community, I think that's important for us to know what is being passed and I'm a little concerned by that. I'm also concerned, I think the applicant was one of the commissioners. I'm a little concerned about that also. I think that we get in this political realm of, okay, let me do a job so I can maybe do something later on. I live in Eden. I live there. I raise my kids. My kids are elementary school to junior high. That same walk that Kelly was talking about. It's where I want to raise my kids. I don't want, uh, a bunch of density. I I, I saved a plan so I could live in the valley and raise my kids here. I also have tractors. I also like the farming community. Raise a chicken, hatch a egg. I think that's important for them. And that's why I'm there. Um, I think that you know, going forward, kind of along the lines of, of, um, Mr. Charlie and his, his great speeches, that was very impressive. That was a lot of time. And that bill was paid for him to do that. I think that maybe Charlie should have an opportunity to present that to a public hearing up in the valley. I know that in the past, the junior high has been open for people to come and to hear it. I, I found out about this meeting yesterday. Like, we don't know about it. I've got a ton of buddies and neighbors. I'll want to be here, but couldn't make it happen because they didn't know about it. What's going on? This is a problem. And, uh, I've committed myself to be a part of this. And all the people behind me have also. It's an emotional thing. You can see it on the end of, you know, what I'm saying. But it's not right. It's not right that we fly things under the radar. We don't know about it. We find out later. He spent a lot of time, he's changing the, the valley, the road system. I think that people in the valley might want to know about it. Maybe have a little public hearing on that. But my recommendation is to keep the roads the same and we'll see how the people truly feel. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Roundy. I live at fifty-three sixty-one East twenty-six twenty-five North, just east of where this is, um, proposed. Um, I appreciate your guys' time tonight and your evening and taking it away from your family. Um, my family's just at home too. I've got three little boys just sitting there waiting for us to have dinner. So, um, we moved up to the valley, like my husband said, about ten years ago. And the question was, why did we move to the valley? Is because of the peace that many of my neighbors have said. Um, I have small children. Um, I was very concerned about them walking. I, my profession, I do advocate for physical activity and nutrition, um, active lifestyles. Um, but I've learned that it's so easy to just get out and walk. We don't need these structured curb and gutter and widened streets or whatever the rain trails were making it look like the city. Um, we moved up there because it wasn't the city. And I understood that when I moved to the valley, that I was going to have to go over the mountain for sports, for entertainment, for all of my leisure things. I knew that a lot of those commercial things, I'd have to go down the canyon or over the mountain to do those with my boys. And let me tell you, it's very exhausting when I've got three boys in very many sports. I'm over on the other side all the time. But when I come back up into the valley, it's peaceful and that's where I want to be. Um, I don't want to have all of this. I understand change is hard. Change is hard for all of us. We, like Shane said, there's a lot of emotion to it. Um, change can be good, but if we can maybe look at the master plan and really think about where we're going to be going and keeping this as a farming community agriculture. That's what I hope. I hope that the roads do stay the same. I have my parents who live right on the other side of the market. My father comes with his tractor to plow our, um, driveway every winter. Goes past that four-way stop. And it's my most favorite thing of the year because he loves it. He's a farmer. He wants, uh, to come and help his daughter. And sometimes we're stuck there for hours because he has to wait and plow his own driveway. But keep the roads the same. Please keep the valley as it is. Thank you.
All right, well, um, we've got a comment online, Talia.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for taking my comment. I wasn't able to come in person and I'm really sad about it. I have, my family and I have lived in the valley for about eight years. We built a home up here. So we're relatively new compared to a lot of people. But we've been driving up to this valley for over twenty-five years, every, almost every weekend. When we were younger, dreaming about living up here. And one of the reasons that we did that was because of the peace and the beauty and the rural nature of it. And I recognize that there is a law, a lot of pull to have these high density things for giving a lot of opportunities for whatever, whatever that entails for, for different things. But my husband and I have a huge sacrifice to build our own home by hand here, just so that we could live up here. There is a sacrifice that it takes and, and it is really unfortunate that we are um, changing what this valley means to so many people. Rural is the draw, rural is the focus of the master plan. And that's really where we need to keep it. I am really concerned. I live, um, I should have said where I live. I live at, um, twenty, um, fifty-six hundred east is where I live. So I'm just about a half a mile from this big new development where that's being proposed. And my children, in order to get to their friends' houses or to the schools, have to pass through all of this developmental area that you, that has been proposed. And the safety and the thought of having all of these, so many people coming here and so many vehicles is really concerning to me because, um, you're taking away the safety of the kids. And, and I go out walking and running with my friends and you're taking away that safety by putting all of these big developments in. And one of the things that is concerning to me about this proposal, not, not to mention just the road portion of it, is the height restrictions that are trying to be changed. And it's, it's so sad. You, you take one step out into the, anywhere in the valley and the views are magnificent. And you change those height restrictions and you really, really impact those around you. And you are taking away from people that live here and people that come here to see the beauty and God's creations. So I am concerned about those height restrictions as well. And when do we start taking account for the residents, what they want over what these developers want? In reality, who is more invested in this valley and what it's going to become? The residents, the people that live here, the people that work here, the people that try really hard to maintain the peace here. Those are the people that are more concerned and more invested in what this valley is becoming. Not the people that come in from out of state or they're not local with just a big paycheck. I'm feeling very betrayed by our county commissioners. Um, I feel it makes me very, very sad. And I hope every person in attendance, either online or in person, will get the word out so that we can start spreading the word and we can really make a change so that our political leaders really have to start listening to us. It is very, very disappointing. We need to preserve a rural. I love this area. I want, I've raised my kids here. I want my grandbabies to come here. It needs to stay the same and I am extremely against everything that was proposed today.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, again, my name's Jim Bird. I live at ten fifty-two Metal Arc Lane in Huntsville, Utah. Again, thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak. Um, there are so many things going on. In fact, I've been following your meetings and participating in them for the last, what, six weeks? Some of them last five hours. Uh, what really has, it showed me is that there's so much being presented to, uh, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission that I think any one person, uh, would have a hard time grasping it. And what I just think I heard was that if you don't understand a section of it and you table it, then the county commissioners can just simply pass it. So I'm going to add a, a number of things. Um, I've already said that infrastructure just has been extremely ignored. I live on Old Snow Basin Road. They put in, in multiple developments here. They have done nothing, the county has done nothing about the inadequate Old Snow Basin Road to move traffic. And even past commissioner Jenkins said, yeah, we just walked away from that. We still haven't had that. Um, there was a meeting back in October fourth where Charlie stated that the county needed to incentivize developers by assisting them to receive twenty percent or more on their investments. Uh, what other businesses do the county try to help investors make twenty percent? What about, uh, the barber shops? What about homes? What about, uh, elderly care? This form-based development is unbelievable to me. That, that is, uh, as Charlie said, I think one of the commissioners meeting is basically a zoning that one site fits all. Um, there's no clear definition of, of, uh, the new town Eden. Why didn't the new town Eden have a community meeting like the old town Eden did? Uh, we haven't had it and that's what you're hearing, a number of people coming up saying, why don't we get a community meeting? Maybe the commissioners would listen to that if you have a to, community meeting about what's happening to new town eating. Charlie said that on a number of times that he, the, a main road was going to go where the, uh, cement storage sheds were in Sterling's. Those storage sheds were, were approved over three years ago. They knew at least three years ago, and I think Sterling's has been there since, what, at least eight years? They knew that was not going to be an adequate road. And yet now they're trying to force a road through to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission without very much thought to it. Um, the form-based zoning. Okay, form basis not limit to the village areas. It was originally talked about the village areas, but it's not. Um, form base allows for condensed housing. It allows for SDRs. It allows, as the woman previously said, uh, forty-foot building height. And these form bases, like, uh, the one that's being proposed right now, that's a quarter of a mile away from, um, the village market, the valley market. There are five parcels between it. It tells me that if you approve that, the developers are going to be saying where that form-based village, the outline is. And that's a quarter mile, as Charlie even said, is about the, the maximum of people who walk. But if you even take the last proposal or another proposal, that is at, uh, a twenty-three point nine acre parcel at fifty-five hundred east, two hundred twenty north. Um, that's over a half a mile away from Old Town Eden in a very rural area, uh, surrounded by, uh, other, other homes. That's not adjacent to anything and yet it's being tried to pass form base. So my, my comment in my, uh, request is that instead of tabling something and allowing the, the, uh, county commissioners pass what they want, is that you open it up to allow Ogden Valley community to speak about what they want in terms of village, particularly as it pertains to New Town Eden, since you allowed that to occur with Old Town Eden. Thank you so much.
Robin Adams.
Hi, my name is Robin Adams. I have lived in the valley for thirty-eight years. I reside at twenty-four seventy-seven North Highway one sixty-six in Eden, directly south of the proposed development. I strongly oppose the high density housing. I also oppose the map of the roads that go through my neighborhood and potentially eliminate me and my neighbors. I don't want to see another park city. I've lived here, born and raised here. And it's very upsetting knowing that we're all putting in our time and effort to oppose this and chances are, our voices will not be heard tonight. And I want you guys to recognize that that map affects all of us right here in this neighborhood. It's not about the big developers and the money that they can make and pad their pockets with. It's about the locals that live here, that this community has been part of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Gleason.
Good evening, Commissioners, Ron Gleason, Eden, Utah. Without diving into a lot of the specifics, I'm going to just ask that you table the requests that were on the agenda. So I understand them. There was specific requests for changing the form-based code to deal with how buildings should look, modern, these types of things. Add also some road plans. The reason I'm asking for you to table it is there's no specific information available to us, John Q Public, to be able to understand these changes. I have read the packet. I have listened to the work sessions. And it talks about getting things changed and ready for when a rezone may come forward. Well, the rezone hasn't come forward. There's no specifics. You look in the frontier system. There's an entry for Eden Crossing, but it has no details. It has no maps. It has no specifics with it. But it does have a review by the Fire District that, that has already approved this. So I find it ironic that there appears to be details floating around somewhere that somebody has access to, except us in, in John Q Public. So in order to provide any type of feedback, we need to understand what specific changes would be so we can, again, understand them and try to provide good feedback to yourselves and/or to developers. It just appears that the process is backwards. So again, I asked you to table this. I asked that the details of why these changes to the form-based code are being looked at and allow us to understand exactly what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Corby.
Hi, good evening. Um, I've lived here for thirty-six years. I live at forty-nine oh one east, twenty-seven twenty-five north. My last name, Corby Young. Um, been here for thirty-six years and seen a lot of change in that time, a lot of new development all around. The things that, um, I've tried to look up the form-based zoning and every time they rezone something, what it was to what it's going to be. And it's, it's confusing for somebody that's not well-versed in that sort of thing. Um, but it sounds like I need to brush up on, you know, and get more involved in what's going on here. We've stopped several things from happening up here and I commend whoever's responsible for that. The rock crushing plant, um, a road, my road going through all the way up to Powder Mountain. Stopped that and was very grateful for that. The thing I notice up here though is being so close to Ogden, like somebody said, twenty minutes away from everything we need. It's, you know, it's funny to start these new businesses and, and developments up here and everything because I look at Sterling over there and they're out of business again. What's going to happen to that building? What's going to happen to the valley market when they build their new valley market? Is it going to sit empty forever? What's the, what's the plan for all these vacant buildings that are getting put up and then people can't afford it or they move on or whatever the reason? And you can thank social media for welcoming everybody to the Ogden Valley. I've been told that there are signs outside Disneyland to come visit Ogden Valley. And my brother has sent me several things of why we should visit Huntsville and whatnot, but I would gladly pay farmers to drive on these roads daily just to slow down the traffic. It brings me so much joy to see a tractor and know that there are still people up here that love the farming and the rural lifestyle. I don't know if you're familiar with the term slack season, which is what we're in right now. Which means that I can go to the end of my road and turn out on Highway one sixty-two without having to wait for five minutes. Because once the ski season's over and everybody goes home, before the campers come and the club, car clubs and the motorcycle clubs and just all the noise that's horrendous in this valley when it's not slack season. And I think that all these developers and their cutesy ideas of villages and little shops and everything, we don't need. We've got plenty of condos that aren't filled all the way. And so I don't see a reason for there to be anymore. Thank you.
Mike White, I live at twenty-five oh eight North fifty-six hundred East in Eden, Utah. Um, I guess one question I want to ask is how many slices of heaven can you sell before heaven is no longer heaven? Um, I'm just getting to the point now, there's so many boats out on the lake. It's not even fun to go out there. Um, like she was saying about the slack season. Uh, my parents live at the end of a really long driveway, and you can't imagine the noise from all the motorcycles and all the car clubs and all the rock, rice rocket cars and all the stuff that goes around this valley, um, this summer. It's getting to the point where it's so loud that it's not comfortable anymore. Um, the residents don't like it. Uh, we want dark skies, but we want to have more buildings with more lights. I think the valley's at a tipping point. And I think it's going to get worse and it's going to go faster, quicker. We look at the developments that are going over in, um, Peterson Mountain Green Area to the ultra-rich that are ten to twenty million dollar houses. Um, plus, um, they have their own private ski resort. There's another one being built in Co-Ville, um, the Tiger Woods Golf Course. Um, it's coming to our valley. It's all going to connect eventually. Um, if somebody wants to continue to sell slices of heaven, it's no longer going to be heaven. It's no longer going to be fun. Traffic is going to be horrendous. And look at what happened with the road that got washed out, and all of a sudden we have avalanches, so we had to use Trapper's Loop. Uh, we only had one way in and one way out. Um, the roads are getting bad. The traffic's getting horrible. It's just going to get worse quicker. Um, and yeah, what about our kids riding up and down? I send mine all the way to Maverick all the time, or to the Valley Market on their bikes. I feel safe now, but if we're going to have all these interconnecting roads and a lot more traffic, um, I'm not going to feel safe having my kids riding around on their bikes or walking. Um, there's going to be too much traffic, too much noise. So I think we need to stop this. You know, how much money and how much power is enough? Um, if they want to go live in Park City and have a lot of traffic, I'd be more than willing to help pack them up and move them.
I thank you for all being here. Uh, my name's Kyle Champfield. I live at twenty-four forty-four North Sierra Drive. Um, I am not a very cell phone, social media savvy person. Luckily, one of my great neighbors here let me know about this at two forty-five this afternoon. Um, I would love to have seen the turnout here. Had there been a thorough notification of this. I have first time hearing some of this. Like I said, I, I don't get in touch with a lot of social media and however this got put out to a public, but, um, lived in the valley nineteen years. Like many have said, we moved here for a reason. We moved here. Enjoyed the area. We moved here for what it is, um, trying to change it to something that it's not. Just doesn't seem like what any of us came here for. Um, I'll end there and keep it short. Um, say no, thanks.
Uh, Casey Quinn. I live on, uh, North River Drive in Eden. I also have some property down, uh, in the, just, uh, the southeast of this project. I've known John Lewis for quite a while. He's, he's generally a pretty good guy. Um, I've defended him against some outlandish criticism on some of his other projects. Uh, I don't agree with this project. And I'm going to be that guy to say, who are we going to put in these four hundred units that don't have a commitment to rural life, but are committed to the village? It's not a village up there. It's rural. Let's keep it rural. Um, sorry, Charlie, but don't put any damn flower beds all around. They tried that already. Thank you.
Mike Gillespie, Eden, Utah. Um, since it doesn't really matter what you guys recommend, apparently, I would suggest that you simply represent us as the Eden Planning Commission and send a message for those who do decide ultimately on these matters that we, the people, aren't in favor of it. So whether you go this way or that way or table it, I'd rather recommend rather than table anything that you just say no for us.
I recommend closing the public hearing.
I, we, there's some other items in here. Give the applicant a rebuttal now.
You should close the public hearing and then you can give the applicant rebuttal time, or if you have staff, can answer some of those questions from the public as well.
Do we have another comment before we close it?
I'm back. Dave Carver, fifty-five sixty east. Um, just, sorry, the flower pots reminded me. So a few years ago, I asked the county to change the speed limit between Snowcrest and Valley Elementary. Couldn't we just lower the speed limit instead of putting flower boxes in? Just putting that out there. Thanks.
My name's Robert Fuller. I live at eleven seventy-five North, fifty-nine hundred East in Eden. So I appreciate your service on the Planning Commission. I want to make a comment on page forty-two of seventy-one in your, in your package. You're given these options, and your fifth option, it says, quote, "As always, there is a fifth alternative, which is to make no changes." So I would, I would suggest that you take option five and make no changes. And I'll tell you why. I see you're sitting around here thinking about a different way to change roads. My suggestion would be to the county, why don't you finish what you've started? So this spring, I stood up there in a subdivision in Eden where the water was over the side-by-sides tires, and there's no storm drain. You might remember back in the day, I bear not mention the doctor who was in charge of your storms, but you have an unfinished storm drain plant up there, okay? So I stood there watching the, watching the water go down the road. Then on the hillside, you see all the per holes for the new place. So I'd say before you start changing the roads, why don't you go back and kind of perfect and bring everything up to code or make it more functional with what we already have? So in other words, finish what you've got there before you start into fine-tuning the roads and expanding what you have there. Um, I don't want to pay for a bunch of fancy roads and new roads. I would say leave it just like it is. And I'm not sure what the driving force is. I didn't even know we had this form, what we call the form-based zone. We strayed a long way from the three-acre and five-acre minimums that we went through the general plan many, many years ago. And there's something inherently unfair about this, okay? So if I'm reading this on one oh-four twenty-two, which is your form-based zone, dash five lot development standards, paragraph A, small lot residential, three thousand square feet for a small lot residential. Now, how come you're going to pick and choose and somebody gets to put a home on three thousand square feet, if I'm reading that right? And where we are, we need two thousand seventeen hundred square feet. We need five acre minimums. So two or three miles away from this project, we need, we need five acres for one home, while at the same time you're putting, you may allow a three thousand square foot lot up at these, uh, form-based zones, if I'm reading that right. So it's about a seventy-two to one ratio there. So I guess my point is, before you start turning, before you start really accelerating the development with new projects, why don't you go back and let's patch up what's already done, put in the storm drains, fix the roads we have, leave them just like they are. So we don't have to, uh, privatize the profits and socialize the costs. Who's, who's going to pay for all these storm drains? You're going to go back now, and you're probably going to put in the storm drain that should have gone in over all these years. And then you can prorate it over our property taxes. So before you build the new roads, I would say skip the new road idea. Go back to your basics, focus on what we have, and maybe slow down on some of these creative plans to transfer development rights, where I think you're getting a terrible imbalance where some people are going to be able to really maximize and crank out every penny out of their land, while the rest of us are stuck on a very different scheme. So I appreciate your time. I would opt for your option five on page forty-two and not change the roadway uh, concept that's been proposed there. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Looks like. Here it is. Yeah, looks very.
Hi, guys. Um, I've had trouble with. Um, sorry, I've had trouble with my internet. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, let me do something.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, got to turn you up, guys. So, um, I'm just not in the middle of any of these proposed towns. But just from a process perspective, I think there's a lot more community input that needs to occur. Um, you know, unless you're an avid fan, as some of us are, of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, these are new terms. Um, the application of the zone-based village, um, is a new concept since the general plan was approved. And I just think you got to hear a lot more from the community. And also, I will express myself some confusion about um, where these villages are, where's Old Town Eden, New Town Eden? You know, do we really base broad land use plans on whether Sterling Automotive is operating or not, or you know, the ill-advised look of those storage units in Old Town or in New Town Eden? Um, I don't know. It's, it's kind of like, I'm a big Ted Lasso fan. And I think the concept of form-based village and where the villages are is a little bit like Roy Kent in, um, Ted Lasso. It's like Roy Kent, he's here, he's there, he's everywhere. And so I think the community needs some assurance that there's some planning and longer-term vision of where these towns develop or, or villages develop. Because for me, this is a hard left turn from what I understood the plan was. And getting greater input can at least, um, result in a better decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. I, I.
Commissioners, John Lewis, Eden, Utah. Um, yeah, I guess I would like to rebut some of that. Um, you know, I, I say this to a lot of my friends and neighbors that, uh, have been behind me, uh, from Casey to um, Chad, to a lot of my good friends that have, you know, very, uh, true and, and accurate, you know, feelings about this. And I realize all this brings up a lot of passion. And, you know, as you have all discovered on the Planning Commission, this is a tough thing to do. Um, I, I think the first premise we have to all get past is life changes, growth happens. There's not a valley in our country that's not growing. Um, the, the question is, how do we manage it responsibly, as responsibly as possible? And uh, you know, we, as a group, spent tons and tons of years coming up with the general plan. In twenty-fourteen, twenty-sixteen, we, we got everybody's opinion together after, you know, literally years of input and said, okay, we want top-of-shelf, we want rural, quiet, friendly, you know, we want to keep it as beautiful and rural as possible. And, you know, unfortunately, people either forgot, or they just moved here years ago, or it's just, you know, they forgot how we planned to achieve that. You know, our plan, we made a plan very specifically. We drew seven circles on a map and said, okay, if we're ever going to stay rural, if we're ever going to, you know, acknowledge that there's nine thousand more front doors that are going to pop up every three acres. If we don't want our valley to look freckled, you know, same amount of cars driving around, but how do we manage that herd of, of cars and people and rights? And we came up with villages. Now, they don't have to be cities. They don't have to be villages. They can be a lot of things, but they need to be as responsible and fit in as well as possible. And, and all of that, whether it's Eden Crossing or the next thing, you know, that, that definitely is open to public debate, and we need to massage that till everyone is as happy as possible, even though we won't make everybody happy, but we need villages. We need to transfer density off of Middle Fork or wherever. If we're ever going to get that to stay rural, otherwise it fills in like a measles map. And, you know, we as a group agreed, we don't want that. So how do we do it? We do villages. Now, if you move that density through TDRs to a village, nobody in that village is going to be happy about it. So for gentlemen like Hugh, I feel bad for him. It's, it sucks to be in a village. It's going to get busier. But how else do we achieve our community's general plan if we don't move them? So the general plan says not only move them, but do them in a way that is responsible, do it in a way that is thoughtful. You know, includes night sky ordinances. Um, and put it along utilities. You know, you, we can't do villages without sewer. That's why they haven't appeared yet, other than at Wolf Creek or places where there are sewer. So if we don't put in the sewer, then we don't get villages. And if we don't get villages, we get sprawl. And that's the number one thing we're trying to avoid. So you, you can't have growth and no sprawl. We, you know, those two just don't add up. So, uh, you know, the, the reality is we have to figure out how to do villages. And as a group, we can get together and make those villages as, as succinct and, and fit in as well as possible. They don't have to be five-story. Maybe they're three-story. Uh, and all that can come, you know, at the next meeting or the next time, but when it comes to where do we put these and why, that's why. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to address how we got here in the first place. It's not willy-nilly. It's been very thought, thought-forward, and our community came together and came up with this plan ten years ago. This is nothing new. So, uh, with that, I'll take any of your questions or we're all sit down anyway.
I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused as well because you're, to come up as an applicant, and yet we're looking at deciding on an ordinance amendment, right? That's what we're deciding on. We're not deciding on an applicant's proposal, right? We're just deciding on whether we want to bend the form. Okay, and I guess the confusion comes in because we haven't seen the Eden Crossing project, but it is something that people are referring to and um, you know, want to express their passion about vote no for this and all of it, but that's not what we're actually voting on. We're voting on an architectural amendment. That's one part. Not a fan of these multi-part proposals, but, uh, the second part is the street change, and I can understand that. I do think these are separate um, items. Um, but it makes it, it makes it difficult because it's something I would think that we're discussing as a planning commission on an architectural style. Form-based zone, for better or not, has been adopted. It was adopted before I joined the commission. It was adopted six, seven months ago, uh, before the summer. I joined in the summer. Um, that's, that, that's there. Form-based zone is there. And so as I understand it, this is a question of do we want to increase the options of architecture of something that's already? Do we want to increase the options of architecture of something that's already adopted?
Yeah, I'm just acknowledging that there are several architecture works already at play in that Eden area. And I personally like the Zimby Dental better than I like. Pat's Food Shack. So my suggestion is to add the mountain modern component to the matrix of possibilities. And then when we come back to you with with our ideas, you can say, yep, I like it or I don't like it, or no, I want Pat's Food Shack. You know, but I think it's a, you know, it's already there, it's a precedent, and I think we should acknowledge that it's. One of the things that's possible there and is currently congruent with what is there. That's all.
We have two things, I, as I understand it, one is applicant has requested a change in the zone.
No, that's not what I understand.
The street, it's the street regulating.
Village zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it's just the ordinance we're looking at.
Yeah, there's no, we're not asking for a rezone here.
No, no, we're just adjusting the ordinance to adjust Newtown street regulating. And provide alternative design standards for Newtown. So two things we're talking about. So the applicant has requested, we'd like these changes here. Staff has said, well, here's some alternatives, you could do that. Or we can change something away from this. And we can change a whole bunch of things. We have four options on how we could change things in addition to what the applicant has asked.
Commissioner Burton, to be clear. The form based change in the ordinance will allow them to rezone if it gets changed without having to have. So if the street regulating plan changes and the colors move more east or whatever direction you want to call it closer to this project. They can now rezone to that to make the project work. So essentially, it's not a rezone, but it will allow a rezone.
Expanding the street.
It's expanding the street regulating plan.
But that rezone would have to come back for a public hearing again, so.
Well, not if it's in the, if it's in the street regulating plan and it gets moved. I thought they could just.
No.
Rezone back to that because it's in the street regulating.
If it's in the street regulating plan, it supports that, but they still have to go through the rezone process um to do that and the public hearings required for.
Okay, understood. So we've been told, as I recall, this form based zone sets forth some standards, architectural standards and a street regulating plan. So if the zone says, this is how it works in the zone, somebody can come and say, I want to rezone to that. Rezone my AV three or whatever to this form based zone. And if that passes, then that person's in the form based zone and he can do anything allowed in that zone. As as long as his application. Fits within the zone, he can do that. We can't say no.
You can say no on a reason.
Yeah, but once it's zoned into the form based zone, it doesn't come back.
Right, they need to meet the ordinance requirements that you're looking at some revisions at this time. And if it meets those, once that rezone is approved. Then you're correct.
Now, is that different than like if you're rezoning to the AV three, which already exists?
It is different because in the AV three, you're not dealing with the street regulating plan. So the street regulating plan is another step. For the village core area in the AV three, that's separate. That's just looking at AV three without the form base. Okay, so the form base is just in the village areas.
I think the best way to think of this is that we have. So we have this vision outstanding of, you know, buildings and and the road areas, potential roads. In order for the, for someone to. So so if you wanted to change that vision before you became that, you have to first do what we're doing tonight, trying to make that. That say, hey, does this fit with your vision, which is the question? And then from there you would have to go, okay. My, my, you know, say it, say it, all right, it does fit with the vision. Now I want to apply for that. We're setting, this is a general, like, setting a vision of what it looked like. So. What Charlie's proposed, and I somewhat think it's it's tough, so he's given us options. I understand there are options, but those aren't the only options. And he's just tried to give us some options and things that he said. It can stay the same, it can be any of those, we can change it even as much as we really want to or need to. Is that correct? Um, so the, what he proposed was just options, just trying to get the conversation started. We can take it from there, we can leave it and say. We we like what's here and we want to see how it grows up. We currently have spent. Years trying to set it. And as we've said it, we can, we can say that or we can change it. So if that kind of summarize. What we're trying to decide now is more. Does it fit with your vision?
Vision at this point in time, because in all likelihood. Another developer will come along and ask for another change. The. In the same way, we're being asked today. So it's, this isn't a absolute. Now, based on what's being asked and what's, how it's been.
I'll just say one more thing, and I'll sit down and let you guys deliberate. You know, the other thing is, is the general plan very specifically says, please try to. Run your growth along utility and and resources. So. Later you might get a request for something somewhere else, but it should be along the sewer. That's the responsible way to do this. Um, so just keep in mind that this isn't just. One guy's opinion of, I'd I'd like to buy this field and do something. It's because the utilities are there and the and the sewer is going in. And it's currently closer to the four way to the circle than the current area for multifamily. So it's tighter and it's got utilities. That's why this makes more sense from a general plan point of view. Okay, thank you.
If you want to make that comment, I think, Commissioner Barber, that was. That is the point is that. Charlie and his team have worked hard to try and understand how does density work? I mean, you guys went to school, you studied this stuff, this is, you you did, you made your best effort. Reality developers are going to continue to come and ask for what's actually feasible and. We get here from the public and I totally understand that, like, everything that was said, but I think that's, it's going to continue. So the amendment that's here before us, the options, we're gonna likely see changes going forward and we just have to understand that. Whether we approve them or not, we're gonna see them.
Absolutely. That's why the process exists as it does. That's why we are required to do public hearings. Absolutely.
So I've got another observation on rural. Okay, the horse is out of the barn. And I think when I heard from Kelly Booth say that TDRs is what's changing our valley, that really rung a bell with me. Because years ago, the TDR horse went out of the barn with the twenty sixteen general plan. They were discussed before that, but the idea that we're going to, we looked at Charlie's map. And it had measles all over, all the little red places where people could do.
Definitely not Charlie's map. Charlie didn't make that map.
Uh, somebody made the measles map. Okay, but but the concept was there. Do we as a valley want all these three acre, there's the map. All these three acre houses everywhere in the valley, or do we want to concentrate growth in villages? And. Create open space out in the farmland where these red measles spots are. That was the question back then. And I think people. Anyway, that was adopted. The idea we're gonna, we're not going to destroy property rights, we're gonna let you transfer them somewhere, but they're gonna go into the highly, um, higher density. Villages. Okay, it's like everything else in life. We're, we're looking at something, oh yeah, I'd like to see that green all the time. And people weren't focused on, oh, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go in my backyard in this village, and I don't like that. So we're either gonna have the measles or we're gonna have the village concept. And that means high density somewhere.
So Chairman, if I might, and I want to add on to exactly what you're saying, this, um, you're speaking. The truth. I know Mr. Lingford mentioned that I got a lot of opinions and they're really just opinions and they are, uh, based off of. Um, science, based off of education, uh, based off of experience, but at the end of the day, there's no one size fits all. This community can grow as you guys choose to grow. In twenty sixteen, the community came together and said, all right, if this on the map is exactly what we currently have built. That would increase is all the lots that were planted at the time, but not built on. Was from traumatic effect, that was bull built out. A lot of folks, and maybe we have failed to continue to trumpet this, to really ring the bell. A lot of folks are failing to understand. That this is the future. This is your build out, not because Charlie's recommended. And not because Mr. Lewis has asked for anything. But because rights exist to develop land and individual landowners will continue to use those rights and they will continue to build. And so the walking distance to the village. To the valley market, whatever it is, you're still gonna have the exact same amount of traffic. If we're successful with a one to one transfer, one from the agricultural open spaces or where we want agricultural open space. And one to the village center, that the amount of traffic still coming and going into those areas doesn't change. If you do it this way, you're spreading it out. But on those three critical roads that go into the valley and around the valley, that same amount of traffic is there. And so if we're talking about threats to children in terms of traffic. We will have to improve our roads, whether we do villages or we build like this. This, again, is not anything that the county is currently proposing. This is what existing laws allow. So you hire planners and you have a planning commission. To look at this and say, is this really where we want to be in the future? And in twenty sixteen, planners and planning commission, as long as consultants and the public got together and said, no. No, that's not where we want to be. We would rather come back, let's dial it back a little bit, let's take at least those off. And move them into appropriate village areas. And you can kind of see from this map where those appropriate areas already are because. Existing infrastructure already is there. What really sucks is because there's already existing infrastructure, there's already people who live there. And as we've been looking at these different village nodes, where, whether it be Nordic or we look at Wolf Creek or we look at Eden. The folks who live there, who are on, in the areas where existing infrastructure, infrastructure already is. But look at this going, gosh, this is gonna change. It's gonna really change if all of that, uh, uh, density goes. Right into Old Town Eden, which is this blob right here, Newtown Eden, which is that blob right there. Wolf Creek, which is that blob right there. Liberty is that little bit right up in there. All these are a bunch of three acre lots right in between. And then you can see over here where you've gotten. But if we don't do that, everything else in between. Turns into that. And so the plan, planning outcome. The planning outcome. Is to anticipate this kind of growth. But move them into those village areas.
So what I'm getting at is in twenty sixteen. The idea that we're going to concentrate in villages. Was sold and adopted. But now. We're seeing some of the unintended consequences coming out of that. Now, one side comment on this map here. Just because there's a red dot there, it doesn't mean you can build on it. You have to have water and septic and all the other things. So the the land somewhat restrains where things can be built without the idea of TDRs. Now, if you're going to concentrate in villages. TDRs is, has been proposed, is that's how we get there from here to there. And that means high density. Now, I've also been told general plans should be revisited six to eight years. Okay, well, the last one was how many years ago?
Eight years.
Eight years ago. So maybe as the community says, wait a minute. Maybe these unintended consequences aren't what we really want. Maybe we will have more peace if we have these three acre lots. Then the community needs to say, well, let's rethink the TDR idea in the current general plan. But under the general plan we have right now, that's why TDRs and high density is coming about.
That's right. So yeah, and we're actually just seeing, uh, recently, and I think it's because the TDRs are being discussed so much. The, um, idea that maybe one unit per three acres is okay. Uh, we did hear a little bit about that when we were doing the general plan, but the overwhelming, uh, amount of support that came out of that general plan was. TDRs needs to, need to be successful in order to save the future of the valley.
Charlie, where are you hearing that from me?
Which part? The one unit per three? No, we're hearing a lot of that. We're hearing it from even other people, uh, besides yourself and 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 a few others. It's just, we're hearing a lot more of it now. Than I'd ever heard past.
So about five months ago or so, when I joined. This commission, first thing I asked is why aren't we? I haven't, we are, why aren't we in the process of updating that general plan already? And I was told. And I asked a little more specifically to have, that maybe the numbers, some of the numbers can be looked at, but the county was not going to. Invest in updating that plan, which to me made no. Sense at all. Is that correct?
So I visited with the commission on that and they just finished the West Weaver general plan. And they said probably they'll be looking at the Ogden Valley general plan in four to five years.
So again, I don't know why Western Weaver ever comes into the the conversation here. To me, that makes no sense. To me, this would be a, is a perfect. Wake up call, certainly to. Revisit that plan to look at what was idealistic back then, what we've learned from the water and sewer studies that good money was spent on. Uh, maybe, who knows, maybe downsizing or down zoning in some respect might have to happen. Or might be a reasonable thing to consider. Villages are going to happen, but maybe there needs to be balance and they don't need to be what was envisioned six years ago when the valley was different. Um, I really, really think. That the county is making a giant mistake. And the politicians, you know, aren't elected by the valley, so they don't really care. I don't think. But I really think the community needs to have that plan revisited. It needs to be new input. We've learned a lot. Valley certainly grown in anticipated and unanticipated ways. The developers know more. We know more about the lacking of infrastructure, what it would take to bring that infrastructure into existence. And continuing to ignore that. And still seeking to make decisions. And we may or may not make a decision here, but the county is certainly going to make a decision. And they're not going to look at a lot of detail. They're gonna make a decision based on. Just their general momentum. And I really think, I hate being on this commission and having to rely on a. Six, eight year old general plan. That was based on good intentions, but not based on. Detailed information that we got now. Don't disagree with the, you know, it's a great, great comments.
And I think it's fair to say the county commission is required by law to protect existing property rights. And to follow the laws that are in place. And we have a general plan now that talks about TDRs. Doesn't mean it's good. But it's there.
I'd like to hear. At some point, maybe not right now, legal opinion on is a TDR property right? It was just created out of thin air by the county. What, what is a right, what isn't a right with respect to that? Just by drawing a line. You decided where they could come from and where they could go to. There's no inherent right that's in anyone's deed that talks about TDRs. So I, I think that's worthwhile piece of information to have. I'm not sure the elected commissioners care. About that and they, you know, can use it as a tool for an objective, I guess. And I think the community has a right to know that.
Hey Charlie, just a couple of comments. I know we're starting to run over and whatever, but.
Okay, Charlie, just a couple of comments. I know we're starting to run over and whatever, but. My concern about this whole village zone in all these different areas that are being put in place is. We've kind of created this monster that's going to need to be fed and and with the TDR ordinance of transferring things from. A farmer that's up on the hillside down into a village zone or something. It once, once a development comes into a village zone. It's going to spark other residents to probably want to get out of there. And what that's going to do is snowball and it's going to happen a lot faster than anybody wants. That's my biggest concern about TDRs and. Transferring them down because there's going to be an incentive to actually build there. And that incentive is you can put more units in, you can. Get a better return on your investment potentially by clustering your development. I just think that. It's kind of opening a can of worms. And I've thought that ever since day one, I just. It's starting to make more sense to me now that that's what's going to happen. You bring a multifamily development into New Town Eden. There's going to be four other investors right on their tail and they're going to be doing the same thing. And then the residents that live in that area are, they're going to want to sell and then it's going to create more opportunities for development. To bring those transfer density rights down. It's going to, it's going to blow up.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And the three acres per homes, you know, if everything's three acres and it's the measles, that's not going to happen overnight.
No, it's going to take a long time to get there.
There's no, you're not going to get that many septic improvements in the valley, right? It's just not going to happen.
I think you're also right about that. At some point, the health department is going to stop issuing septic.
So there's just, I think, the general plan revisiting, general plan would be a good idea and just. You know, I think that we need to really get into it and. Think of the long-term effects.
And you're definitely more than welcome to chat with the county commissioners about it. Um, but that's what they indicated. And they have to look at the budget for the whole county and that's what they indicated and that's why I brought that back.
When they made that decision and looked at a budget, what was the number they were considering?
Um, they, I, we didn't get into specific numbers. Um, but.
Is there a number? Is there a number that would, that would cost to. Correctly revisit the general plan and add in the knowledge and studies and the experience that has happened over the last eight years?
That, that's something we'd have to put out for a request for proposals in RFP or. Um. And I think, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong here, we are more than welcome to make a motion or a recommendation to the. Look at the. And that's what you did a few weeks or about two months ago. You can do it again and again. And yeah.
If that's what we're going to talk about, let's make a motion for it. If we want to make a motion for it, make a motion.
And it wouldn't be a motion, just be a recommendation because it's not on your agenda to make a motion right now, but you can de- definitely give me direction and I can take that to the county commission again.
Yeah. So just trying to, if we're going to revisit the general plan or if that's what we're wanting. Make that clear or so we can.
I think that would be a good idea to bring up.
All in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Me opposed. So I think we're all unanimous that it's a good idea to revisit it sooner than four to five years.
So I just, sorry, back to the TDR thing really quickly, since this was being discussed. Um, I'm very disappointed, obviously, to hear what I heard tonight because I, I didn't know. I've been out of town the last two meetings. I didn't know that the commissioners passed it. Um, and one of the reasons that I was under the impression that we talked about for months was slowing down because. We were creating a new right that didn't currently exist. And once you create a new right. We're not about to take it away from people, right? That's, it's a big part of. Utah's personality is.
It's a big part of the problem.
Down zoning and not taking rights away. So.
That's exactly right.
So it sounds like they passed it. So now this is what it's right. Let's deal with the reality. So apparently that's passed. TDRs are here at the moment. Um. Or here. But what I want to remember is that as far as I'm aware, TDRs are about. Residential development, right? So we're talking about either the measles map of everybody. Builds wherever they have a right, which obviously would take a lot of time. Also, some people just won't build, right? Some people just want to keep the land around them. Um, but on the same factor, if we're doing the village thing to try to create an open space, that was the point of the general plan that I was aware of. Um, we were allowing people to sell off those rights by keeping their land, sell the rights so that those development rights for residential use. Could go in a density area. That's correct. Okay. Um, so two things about that. Number one, just to remind everybody, people don't have to sell their development right. It's also correct, right? We have uh, conservatory uh, programs. You can just keep a hold of it. You don't have to sell it. So. There is that people have the right to not develop their property and not sell their development right. So let's remember that we also need to put onus on people. If you don't want to develop the valley, don't sell your land or your rights. That's one thing. But the other thing is. What we saw in this. Package that I think scared a lot of people, including myself, was not a. Residence. And what we've dealt with a lot is these residential developments. What we saw today was a city center. And that's not residence. And it was kind of tied in with. The TDR and this and that. And that's a very different thing.
That's true.
Um. So again, TDRs. We haven't made up any new development rights. It's a, it's one-to-one transferred. There's no bonus. There's no new. They already exist. They're not developed now. So I get that part. But I do think that some of the comments brought up about how we live 20 minutes away from a city. We can go down there for commercial use. We can go down there for whatnot. That's a different topic than just, you know, people have rights. We're not trying to take them away. But that doesn't necessarily mean we need to put cities and things like that. That's, that's a different topic as well.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I clarified. When I said city center, I was commenting on the current annexate or excuse me, incorporation um, desires. I wasn't meaning we're trying to create a city. I meant city center as in town hall. That's what I meant by that statement. I didn't mean city. I apologize for the misstatement.
Um. So. Um, as we're, as we're considering the options, a couple, I have some comments where we kind of move in. My thoughts are that. We've spent a lot of time on these. Um, there's certain items we mentioned, you know, infrastructure and things that already exist. That one of the questions was, does these maps take into consideration the infrastructure? And infrastructure is a big word because it means a lot of different things, but one particular is the road. And I think the community is in, in favor of a roundabout and not a stoplight. And that, um, that roadway through is not going to get. Less traffic. We have Wolf Creek, there's Powder Mountain. The traffic to that area is just not going to get better. And so the, you know, some of the design plans that are there just don't. They're, they're a dream, in my opinion. They're not something that could feasibly work. Um, you'd basically be cutting off. That thoroughfare and a roundabout is probably the best option. To maintain that. And so then the question becomes, so what should this, this, this zone look like or this, this, this village? And I think we've spent time on that. Um, and we have a plan currently. And the plan currently was, as you put it, didn't cause waves. And I think the reason it didn't cause wave is because it's what's already established and what was planned with what's there. Meaning we already have the maverick. We already have the grocery store. We have the, the, the stores and the, and the property there.
Already property zoned commercial.
Exactly. So we tried to mimic that. And I don't think that we have given enough time for this farm-based village. Idea as it's basically just barely been approved. To even get fleshed out in the design and vision that we already have before we. Start looking at having uh, moving that area over. And so to me, it makes sense to not change. The, the center of the area, you know, leave that on the outskirts. Not allow, you know, not push a condo across the fields, you know, in the future, maybe that makes sense. Uh, but I don't know that right now is the time to do that. And. As far as the plan goes, I don't know that we've given enough time to let those, the, the, it develop. You know, there's several empty. Uh, lots over there. I drove through there today by the car wash. There's lots of empty for sale and lots. There's places that can be done. Um, we're, because today we, today we adopt this and then, oh, we should have done that. We should have looked at this when someone else had a chance to, to look at this. Because now we've just changed the whole dynamic. So I think we already have a plan and I'm not convinced that we really need to make. Changes at this time. Um, not saying that this is a bad plan, just saying that it might not be the right, might not be the right time.
It's a valuable.
So those are, those are my comments. And if there's any other comments, I think I'd love to hear them. Otherwise, let's have a motion. So.
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to address any of the comments from the public?
You had some questions. There were some questions from the public. I forgot to ask.
Ready to make a motion.
But if, but why don't we have, I want to hear your comment.
Oh, I think the village thing is good. I don't know the whole, it's got to be all in one village. I mean, the seven different spots are good. We're trying to cram it all in one. Nordic's there too, but. This is more condensed than I thought.
I'm going to, I'm going to kind of piggyback on what you were saying about, we've already have a, an established village. We've already got commercial properties in there. The lines make sense to me as, as current, you know, as instead of changing it. Um, we don't even know how it's going to play out or work at the end of the day. We're kind of already switching gears if we switch to a different plan. Without even knowing how the original one is going to work. So. That's my opinion. I know we're not supposed to give a lot of opinions in here, but I think that's valid opinion.
This is the best time to give opinions. This is a great time. It's a legislative item and you guys have a lot of persuasion with the county commission.
I, I just want to make the point that. There's, I don't even want to talk about the general plan because we're, we're tasked here to talk about what the general plan is as a police officer and what laws have been enforced. I think it is smart and that's my vote of yes. I, because the circle is drawn, whether it shifts at amoebas. It was drawn by a planning staff with their best intent. Where the center is, where the edge is. I think these are all good points. I think the public is totally right. I just. We're talking opinions. I, I probably don't share the same. I think that applicant-driven opinions should, should draw, where does the density need to go? Let's let the economy, let's let our valley drive where that goes. And that comes with public comment, right? And that comes with where they want to go. So that's my thought is. Is it a circle? Is it an amoeba? Does it go there at all? There's some circles there that we may never see at all. So. That's just my.
I, I just want to, mine's a little bit separate, but there was discussion and some things about letting market drive where these villages are. That was a discussion in some of our meetings in the past. Um. I wish these things were separate. Just this is me to Charlie. Charlie, I, because I don't mind adding additional mountain aesthetic to the architecture plan of an already. Put in ordinance. I think that's fine. As we've saw, we already have those. Designs in the valley. I think that is kind of almost an easy shore. Yeah, you can choose from those aesthetics when we're already prescribing an architectural aesthetic. A road system and where the village center goes is a completely separate argument. And I really wish this wasn't together.
You can separate them. Send one recommendation for approval of the design and one recommendation for denial of the road layout.
I think we hesitate to do that.
In the future, just separate them, please, for me, because it didn't work out very well when we tabled part.
Understood.
So.
When it goes to applicant-driven stuff, it usually gets to you guys the way the applicant is asking. Um, but we could certainly separate them now if you would design these, so.
My understanding at some point soon, the, the underlying development. That's um, driving this road regulating plan adjustment is going to come before this.
Uh, yeah, I, I was hoping to get it before you guys with the next meeting, uh, next month.
Reasonable to consider the road plan. For adjusting this base village. Um, regulating plan at the same time as that's.
Yeah, we did that with the Nordic project. Uh, we did them at the same time.
That was done. I mean, that, that's my outlook that. Uh, clearly the aesthetics are different. That's a, that's one set of issues. But adjusting this. Form-based village regulating, road regulating plans is different. It's being driven or requested by this. Um, proposal that we don't know about yet. So maybe those two could be looked at.
Sound okay.
And then, you know, as we've been sitting forward, next year or next month, there'll be another one come down. They have a different road. As far as this, you know, this, this matrix, so. And I do base some of my optimistic. Other um, resort oriented communities I've lived in. Were a lot of mistakes have been made, but good things have happened. Those three buildings that were shown, that was a thing. Credit Union, the gas station, in one place that I lived in, they called that Alpine Strip Mall. It wasn't a positive. I mean, they, those, you know, that particular community, they recognized they weren't going to do that. They were going to drive a little bit more. More focused aesthetic. In those type of buildings, in addition to residential buildings and.
And hopefully that would be our drive as well.
But that's not quite the feel I get right now. So the matrix, I personally think the matrix. In the right direction. It just needs a little more tweaking, I think. I like the fact that it has width to it and the whole mountain rustic, modern Alpine aspect. I think it's fine. Brancheate between, um, Old Town, sort of the primary aesthetic. Um. More ZMB, and so it is a good example. Um, nicer mountain architecture that. Country and mountain communities. Wrong direction. Um. But there's some pitfalls to that as well, where if you look in Ogden, there's these giant square apartment buildings that try to. You try to move themselves a bit in that direction and then they stop. And those just look like big boxes, but they'll tell you they have that mountain aesthetic. That's how. Part of the matrix that I know the verbiage that goes with it, I think. Community's best interest, the developers are held. I know others might think there should be no standards. I've seen communities. Like up in the valley that have had no standards and they look to. The buildings don't hold up. And the community. A few years down the road says, why the heck did you have? I think the matrix is great. I think it does need a little more focus.
Slow work. And I think it's great observations and we could do that over a work session if you guys.
Thank you. And will you please answer some of the questions that were asked?
Happy to. Um, there seems to be a little bit of misinformation, uh, maybe just a, a general, um, lack of understanding of where we are right now. Right now, the map that's on the screen is the map that is adopted. It's the form-based map. Now, none of it applies to property because none of those properties have been rezoned yet, but. Any property owner in one of these areas who desires to be rezoned before this could ask. Doesn't mean anyone's obligated. You guys aren't obligated to say yes to that reason, but. Um, they could ask and this would be the plan that governs. Um, the streets that you saw, the cross-sections that you saw, those are already adopted as well. And so those aren't changing. Um, those are all part of what happens.
Sorry, say that again.
So those aren't changing, those street cross-sections. Not the layout, layout that, you know, that is up for discussion right now. But street cross-sections, there's no one proposing to change those. Uh, so, uh, one thing I can affirmatively say, uh, is that there are no garden planters in the middle of the road. So no flowers in the middle of the road. We're going to make sure that that's the case. The Arsenal cloud driver said, no way. Uh, and so, uh, that's definitely, uh, going to be the case. Also, uh, each of these road rides away from asphalt to asphalt is wider than the existing roads that are out there. And so if a swather has any issues getting down the roads, um, as they are, or has no issues getting down the road as they are right now. Then the future, uh, roadways that have been designed, they won't have the issues. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear because there's a little misinformation on that.
Charlie, could you also mention on the app how long that plan took and what public input was involved?
This one that's up on the screen? Yeah, actually, um, I think it was, uh, Mr. Bird who mentioned that, uh, the storage units, uh, uh, they were approved three years ago. Uh, how could we not have known about them? Uh, we started this in twenty eighteen. It's been a five-year process. We started. Form-based, um, design controls and, and, uh, working on this ordinance in twenty eighteen. So there are some things we just couldn't have predicted, like those storage units, for example. Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Units aren't part of form-based village.
That is absolutely correct. They are not. They would be hopefully a lot more attractive if they were.
Okay, quick, quick question. For nineteen hundred on your map, you're saying that's been approved. Pull up the map again.
Sorry.
So that's the current map. I'm looking at a, uh, radius there from a cul-de-sac. On the east side of the park, the road that goes down to meet nineteen hundred. And it, rather than going doing a ninety degree turn as it is now. It's a radius road that goes over to another cul-de-sac. On the road that goes on the west side of the park.
Correct.
Down. Right, 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 right. That road connecting those two roundabouts, it goes right through some houses. How's that going to work?
This one right here?
Yeah.
So something that's really important is to read the details of the form based code. The details of the form based code says very clearly that these lines are not survey level accurate. They can be placed within a couple hundred feet. And the whole point of that is there's infrastructure, including homes in some places where this, the roads aren't supposed to go through the walls. That's just not how it's supposed to work. It's actually leads to one of the other, uh, one of the other, uh, questions that I remember had is how wide are these rights of ways? Depends on which right of way you're on. If you're inside the village area, they're wide, they're, uh, hundred and twenty feet wide, which would be sixty foot half width. Now, no one will be asked to do that until they are ready to develop their own. And so, uh, concerns about, um, somebody eaten into their front yard, that wouldn't be, uh, it was something the county would be, be doing. It would be them if they choose. To flip their property for a commercial, they could do that. But once you get into these residential areas, so the lighter orange, the yellows, the, the lighter greens and the greens, those are all residential streets. You're not going to see different streets than what you have out there in most cases.
Okay, but on this radius we're talking about, if I own the little piece on the, uh, northeast corner. Of nineteen hundred and you can't read what it is on the west side of the park. And I want to build something there. You're going to tell me, no, you can't. We've got, uh, radius.
No, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna change this. I'm gonna try to try and push this along a little bit. The, the, the details in here are, it's similar. To, they, they would have to make a change if he was going to develop this. He would have to make the same change that we're looking at tonight. And, and see whether or not it, it makes sense. The, the deep, the, the, the lines, as we've sa- said, are, are in essence of a goal to try and create a vision. So. Um, and what I see on that map is that Eden, Eden Old Newtown is designed to try and push it towards the, the elementary school and the, the commercial that's already there. And then to create a, a, a gap and then have, uh, the old town come now. Maybe that gap changes when the grocery store, if, when, if the grocery store decides to build a new place and it becomes more sprawled, then, then maybe things change, but let's, um. Yeah, the, let's not get too.
Mostly those details.
Yeah, and, and.
That's kind of what I got.
That's the point. You're right, but we. I mean, unless we're.
Idea. It's a, it's a, a source of planning to plan ahead, but it's nothing set in stone. It's the development's going to drive.
That's right. That's why the ordinance is written, written with quite a bit of flexibility and plus or minus where those roads shouldn't, shouldn't. Um, there, I got a couple of things highlighted. I just want to touch on very briefly, um, uh, one, uh, member of the public mentioned that, uh, the last ten years has. Has proven why TDRs don't work and it's just the valley, the development of valleys getting torn apart or is tearing about, about apart. I wanted to make sure that that point is very clear in everyone's mind because TDRs have not been implemented or used.
Well. Kind of. The, development agreements and, uh, form base has not been implemented.
Fair enough. Yeah, what we're seeing right now in the valley is we're seeing existing property rights being developed in that measlin' map fashion. And it will continue to go in that direction as the market allows it. And so if that's the direction we don't like, we need to look at doing something. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I'm not saying do something different, just if you don't like it, there's another way to do it. Um. Talked about the street widths, speed limits need to be changed. We're working with the county engineers to try and work on that. As soon as you get activities on the streets, you have to change those limits. You have to bring them down. Um, I love the idea about, let's get some more trackers and swathers on the road and slow those cars right down. Uh, sometimes I say one of the best things to slow cars down is throw some kids out there. I'm just kidding. I'm not. Not being serious about that, but you know, you, people tend to go a little slower when they see those visual cues that, hey, this is a community, need to slow down. Uh, Mr. Bird mentioned that I am advocating for the county to make the developers money. I said something about twenty percent, uh, uh, more on their developments. That is, uh, not accurate to what I was saying. What I was saying is a developer needs to see their return on investment. If they don't, they're not going to develop. They don't develop. They don't TDR. Again, if TDRs are the bad guys, then maybe that's a great thing, but they will develop in place and, and so we'll see if things spread out. Um, but again, if you want TDRs to be successful, which is, it's a heavy lift that, it's one of the last things of the 2016 general plan, uh, uh, that I, last significant things I should say. If we want that heavy lift, if we want that heavy lift, then we need to help developers see what their motivations are, uh, come to fruition so that we can get those, um. D densities off of those, uh, open spaces and those communities. So, um, okay. Flower beds in the middle of roads already, already got that great comment, um, brilliant. Bringing existing infrastructure up the code. I don't think anybody would disagree, not even the county commission on that. We've got a lot of infrastructure that is not built up to code and we've got a lot of drainage infrastructure not built up to code. We, we heard about that. It's a challenge. Uh, it's actually one of the challenges of sprawl. It's one of the challenges of one development unit every three acres. As much money as you guys are all looking at on your tax bill every year, it's not enough for the amount of hard surface and infrastructure that's out there right now. And so that's why you see roads going the way that they're going. You can play with that a little bit. What the Western Weaver County folks realize is if they get some village nodes. They can get a different kind of, they won't be upside down on that tax revenue. Um, and they can actually use some of that tax revenue to spread it out into those rural areas to provide better infrastructure with those rural areas. So. I'm not trying to say you have to do development in order to get better roads, but I am saying it's hard to pay for what you currently have with one dwelling in every five of them. I think those were the big points that I caught. Was there any other questions that you guys heard that you need to answer?
I don't think so.
One last plug, I'm not the face of bad development or development in general. I'm just here knowing that development will occur. I just want to help you guys navigate the best way to know about that. At the end of the day, you guys know what's best for you. And thank you. I don't know if most people know, you guys are volunteers. You're not getting paid for this.
Thanks. All right. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend, uh, that we forward the recommendation for denial of the county commission for file. ZTA two zero two three dash zero three. The applicant initiated request to amend the form based zone and related amendments. I do so with the following findings. That it is not supported by the general public and the area is not yet ready for the proposed changes to be implemented.
Do I have a second? I'll second motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Please speak in the microphone.
Knowing what I know from, from watching that video and knowing that the. Uh, development, actual underlying development proposal hasn't. I think we should just understand how this will probably. And do it with eyes. Open, that's, that's good. Um. But it was very enlightening for me to watch that. Work session and see, uh, you know, our, our outlook on TDRs totally set aside. Without full deliberation, I mean, this is a different situation. Uh, I personally think it will be.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the motion as, as recommended, as seconded to deny the application. Rec forward a, a recommendation of denial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all, I, I, all opposed? Aye. Aye. Uh, the motion for recommendation of denial passes like five to two. Okay, would anybody like to explain their? Vote? Yeah, I'd be happy to. I voted not necessarily in favor of the project, um. Felt like the discussion again, at my feelings of, you know, we said it clearly that. Where things go, they may change and I, I wanted to see more discussion of, you know, could the applicant go back to the community? And it feels like that didn't happen from public comment. Um, whether that happened or not, that's not up to us. That would have been what I would like to see, um. Uh, so it's not that I'm necessarily in favor of, uh, just, I, because I heard you, right? Um, but I think I wanted to sing one. Cool. So that's why I voted that in. Thank you. Any else?
I'd like to explain, um. Again, because the proposal for the project hasn't come forward, that for me is a big thing. I don't, I'm not in favor of us. Um. Changing things for something that we believe is coming down. I think we need to kind of, to me, that's the cart and the horse. Um, I do want to have a, I like the idea of a new, a new town Eden community meeting. Um. It sounds like commercial is, is, is being planned, uh, road changes, things like that. It'd be nice. To have community involvement in that. If, if nothing else, then, um, a lot more publicity to the public. Uh, and if it sounds like the project that will be coming forward is coming forward the next month or so, then that needs to be communicated. Um, to the public as well. Again, I had no problem with architectural changes. It was all put together and at this time specifically with the road changes. I think that it is, um, not yet ready to be implemented and therefore.
So I voted. Against the motion for a couple of reasons. One, I, I really like the idea that these things be split up. The architecture and road things are totally different. And they both deserve a look. Uh. And I understand that this form based is an alternate to development agreements. Where there would be much more focus on the development that's coming forth and exactly what's going to be done. And this is kind of, uh, the form based seems to be. A way to, uh. Not have development agreements where you really look at the details. So I would have voted to table and try and get some more information. Split things up so we can really deal with them accurately.
I would have, I would have voted to take it, but I think. Vote as we took it, as it passed is essentially probably the same thing. I think both of these matters will come back. And at that point, we'll have a more capable look, more full look at.
Thank you. All right, we'll move right along to public comment for items not on the agenda. We will.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Charlie. If there's any comment from anybody online, uh, now would be the time for items not on the agenda. Okay. Um, with that, we'll go to remarks from planning commissioners.
Chair Schuman, if I might, um, do you foresee a need for any legal input from this point forward? I've got a nine o'clock meeting.
Go, go right ahead. Unless you've got any report or remarks.
I don't tonight. If you.
Go, go ahead. You're good.
Coming up, I can stay, but.
You're good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you so late. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Barber, I believe you had some comments.
I just wanted to say again, and, and it's. Think it's, it's important to understand the. The way that the general plan has been used and being fairly new to the mission. I took a step back and I read it. I read it in depth. Again, I had read it before. And I've heard the county commission use it in a way that surprised me. So. Yeah, we talked to. About this, this commission trying to take forward to the. County commission, a push to have the whole thing looked at again and updated, and I think that's critical. But I also think it's critical, and this has been requested before, that these meetings be held in the valley. I think they should all be held in the valley. Maybe that's wishful thinking. Maybe we can start, and I still have some having to pass. Uh, we need to have some of these meetings held in the valley. I think it's important. And I think it's important that the folks that were here tonight tell their friends. Uh, what they saw, what they liked, what they didn't like. More people can either participate online or ask if the meetings be held up there or show up.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo that, that. I had conversations before this and I heard all of you. And when you said that you didn't know about the meeting. That frustrates me and Rick, I, I don't know what we need to do to, I know that there's public ways to do that, but I don't know from a community. What we need to do to help that get out better, because that definitely needs to change. Had that call on the way here. I, I hear, hear you guys and, and everyone in the community, all of us deserve to know what's, what's, what happened. So the TDR thing, we deserve to know what happened. We also deserve to know what's, what's on proposed. So that's.
Yeah, and I, my suggestion to the. To the community, and I really appreciate the input we got tonight. That's really helpful. But to. Get some, talk to your friends and neighbors. Do we want the measles thing or do we want the village thing? And that, that's where, uh, and, and then talk to your county commissioners. If you feel that there ought to be a change in direction. It's a political thing and that's where it comes from, is the community. So. Be- because this, this whole thing, it, it, tonight's not going to be the only night. Uh, this is going to be repeated night after night, but if there's a community consensus that, hey. We, in hindsight, we really don't like this village thing. And the high density, well, now's the time to revisit it. Catch the horse, get him back in the line and try something else.
You. Rick, you're wrapping this up.
Thank you, Matt. Um, you are aware that you're required to have that four hour train, um, for the, during the year. We're trying to make it easier for you, so we're going to send you out some information online, um, where you can do it and just, there's a little certificate. And then you can just email that into June, so it's a little easier for you guys to do on your own dime. Um, uh, we will be having the Ogden Valley, well, yep, excuse me, the Utah EPA, um, chapter will be here in Ogden in September. Um, so we'd like you guys to try to attend. We pay for, we offer to pay for you guys to come to those. Um, when it's the fall conference, so it's the Utah EPA American Planning Association Conference and so, um. Basically Weaver County Planning and Ogden City is going to be in charge of that and some of the community around us. So we'll be putting that on. Um, I will visit with the commission about the general plan. Um, you know, I can't tell you exactly where that will go. I can visit with them again about having meetings up in the Ogden Valley. Um, I don't know if it'll change from what I told you, um, I think last, last meeting or two meetings ago. Um, you know, I, I, I definitely am an advocate for what you're wanting to do, um, and the commission is very supportive of you. Um, and they appreciate the comments that you do make. They take that to heart. Um, they're not going to always agree with you. Um, and so, you know, you, you. Be respectful of that would be my recommendation, um, because they did have faith in you. They appointed you. Um, that's why you're here is, um, because they felt that you would get the public voice out and they do appreciate your comments. And so. I appreciate, um, when you've made your motions tonight, you explained why, um, you were voting the way you did because we can report that back to them. And that's very helpful. They appreciate that. And so, um. You know, when every, there's a split vote, um, I always encourage you to do exactly what you did tonight. I thought that was great. So I appreciate that. Um, and then also on June sixth, we're trying to get the word out. We've put a word in the Ogden Valley news, um, and. Uh, about the short term rentals and just updating the public on that. And that will be on June sixth. Um, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, you know, we want to get the word out, but there's only so many limited resources that we can use, um, to get that out. And we, so, you know, you have other ideas, we can take that in consideration. We also work with our PR firm to get the information out too. And we put that on the state website. Um, we also try to, I know there's a, a community advocate group out there that puts it on their site when the meetings are happening. And so, you know, we want to get the word out. And so if you have other ideas, we're welcome to entertain those and we'll explore other ideas too. Because that concerns me too, when the public says that they don't, you know, hear those things. And, and I get it. You know, it's not the funnest thing to look at the state website and the Weaver County site to look at agendas and when things are happening. And so, um, it's, it's, it's a challenging situation. So, um, but that's all I have. Um, yeah.